Good evening, welcome to the September 1st Planning Commission meeting. Prior to roll call, I would like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted pursuant of California Government Code Section 54953B and Governor Newsom's Executive Order N-29-20, conferencing teleconference meetings, concerning teleconference meetings. Vice Chairperson Cross, Commissioner Fippen, Roberts, and Ziegler will be participating by speakerphone. To reduce the background noise during the meeting, I would ask that the Commissioners and staff using the conference line to please mute your phones or your computers when you are not talking. Thank you.
Chairperson Hankins?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Cross?
Present.
Commissioner Fippen?
Present.
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Ziegler?
Present.
I was able to hear the Vice Chairperson and Commission members. Hearing no comment to the contrary, the record should reflect that all Commission members have indicated that they were able to hear the proceedings clearly. I would like to remind Commissioners, staff, and the public attendees to please speak directly into the phone to ensure that everyone can hear the meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission on items that are on the Consent Calendar, requests for future agenda items, or items that are not on the agenda. Persons addressing the Planning Commission are required to limit their remarks to three minutes. Please lower your hand before speaking. Hopefully, everybody knows how that works with their phones. If you're, if there is anyone that wishes to speak tonight, Commissioner Fippen will announce the names in groups of three, so please ensure you know your placement and be ready. Is there anyone that would like to speak during public comment?
Com- Chairperson Hankins, I do see two hands up in the attendee list. Cenziana Todor?
Yes, so we'll unmute her first?
And that, yes, and then we will have Susan Harper after her.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I wanna address the Adams Lane development that is proposed by Shear Homes. Um, it is the development between Grace Lane, Adams Lane, and Grand Street. We did have, I want to make sure the Commission knows that we did have a meeting with, uh, it was like a Q and A meeting last week on Wednesday with the developer, and they were presenting us with beautiful pictures that I trust that this Commission will take care to be up to code as far as, uh, design and elevations and so on. There are outstanding items that we still didn't get an answer on, and I'm just going to list them here. Uh, we did pose the question if zoning that's actually, um, listed on the, for sale sign currently, R1, R dash 1 dash E, is the same thing as VSD. It's not necessarily transparent to the normal people in our neighborhood if it's the same thing, so we don't understand necessarily what the density should be for this, um, development and so on. So that's one of the questions. What exactly is the zoning and, um, uh, what's the density according to our zoning ordinances for Brentwood? Uh, I hope this Commission can answer that either via email or, um, after my comments. Um, also, we need to understand what the rezon application is about. We're seeing numbers between forty-seven dwellings and fifty-eight dwellings on various, um, documentation that's been forwarded to us. Uh, currently, the website, webpage that's on the city, um, um, website is not updated. We don't know what's going on, and we don't know what's true and what's not, so we would really appreciate, um, more information on the rezon, um, requirement or application or ask. Um, and then, um, what we need to also understand, what are the requirements around open space?
Cenziana, your time is, your time is up.
I'm, 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 so I need to un-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, um, sorry, you just took three seconds.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'll let you go.
So, um, I, I just have one more thing to finish. We need to understand, um, the open space requirements for this. What are the, um, improvements that the developer needs to do because we keep hearing, hey, you know, let's have more development. It's gonna contribute to more improvements around the city. However, they're, they said point-blank that they're not going to do any road improvements as far as Grace Lane and Long North Road, and, um, the-
Okay, Cenziana, I will cut you off there, but, um, I will have, I believe Mr. Naltemius has your email, and he can get back to you on those questions.
I certainly can do that, Chairperson Hankins, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cenziana. Our next speaker is Susan Harper.
Yep, hi, um, the, um, I'm, I'm, my comments are related to, um, Bridle Gate and relevant to school traffic, um, in the high, Heritage and Adams area.
So I believe that would be for item two? Is that correct, Mr. Naltemius?
Oh, yeah, it is down there, okay, so should I?
So, we'll, yeah, we'll run back to you on item two.
Okay.
Thank you. Marisol Velas?
Hi, I'm also speaking on item two, Bridle Gate.
Okay, if you, if anyone that has their hand raised would like to speak on item two, can you just un-raise your hand right now? This is only for a public comment, and then we'll run back to you on item two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we have no further speakers on public comment at this time. Make sure, okay. Finally, we would like to acknowledge that we have received zero public comments regarding Consent Calendar items, items requested as future agenda items and items not on the agenda that were sent via email or otherwise for our consideration. Any of those copies would be available on the city's website on the Planning Commission's Agenda page. Please note that the Commission's actions are final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk within ten calendar days. And we'll move on to Consent Calendar. Do I have a motion?
Commissioner Ziegler, so moved.
Back in, and Commissioner Cross? All right, then we will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Fippen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ziegler?
Aye.
Commissioner Ziegler?
Sorry, I was off mute, aye.
And Chairperson, Chairperson, Vice Chairperson Cross?
Aye.
And that is aye from me as well. All right, we will move on to business item two, a public hearing, an application for Bridal, the Bridle Gate project, including environmental impact report, a general plan amendment, a rezon, a development agreement, a vesting tenant improvement subdivision map, and design review approval for single-family and multiple-family housing residents. The Planning Commission will be making a recommendation on a certification for the FEIR, including an adoption of a statement of overriding considerations and a mitigated monitoring and reporting program, and approval of the entitlements listed above to the City Council, which will take final action on the project. Tonight's staff report is by Ms. Debbie Hill.
Good evening, Chairperson Hankins and members of the Commission. Um, before we begin, I want to make sure you can all hear me okay and see the PowerPoint.
I can.
Okay, excellent. Uh, to begin, I would like to give you a little bit of background history on the Bridle Gate project. Discovery Builders filed the first entitlement application for Bridle Gate in early 2001, and it would be five years with many iterations of the project in between before it was ultimately approved by the city in June of 2006. This original Bridle Gate project incorporated one hundred and fifty-six single-family homes, along with permanent open space, a park, and the regional commercial acreage, and the project included the general plan amendment, rezon, development agreement, a vesting tentative subdivision map, and the design review for the single-family homes. Discovery Builders never moved forward with the construction of the project, so all of the entitlements expired, with the exception of the general plan amendment and rezon, which took effect at that time and resulted in the land use and zoning in effect today. Fast forward to late in 2011 or early 2012, Discovery Builders presented its initial concept for revised Bridle Gate project, which included some four to five hundred of single-family homes. This new concept has been revised over the years, culminating in a new application from Discovery Builders in June of 2017, which is what you'll be reviewing this year. So, the history of this project is complex, and in addition, the site is also unique. Uh, it is one of the largest single undeveloped parcels within the city. There is varied topography, including the ridge lines along the west side of the project. There is the presence of Sand Creek flowing through the property. It's adjacent to State Route 4 to the east and Priority Area 1, which is now known as the Innovation Center of Brentwood, to the north. It has a common boundary with the city of Antioch, the west, and there is existing single-family residences to the south. The current Bridle Gate project encompasses two parcels totaling approximately one hundred and thirty-seven acres, located just west of the State Route 4 and Sand Creek Road interchange. The project involves a myriad of entitlement applications, including a general plan amendment, a rezon, a development agreement, a vesting tentative subdivision map, a design review for the single-family homes, a design review for the multifamily apartments, as well as the required environmental document for the entire project. As I mentioned, the current 2014 general plan land use map includes the land uses anticipated with the earlier 2006 approved Bridle Gate project, including approximately thirty-three acres north of Sand Creek Road designated as regional commercial, and the balance of the acreage designated as residential low density park and permanent open space south of Sand Creek Road. The proposed general plan amendment would keep permanent open spaces area essentially as currently designated along the western portion of the site. The park location would be divided into two neighborhood parks within the single-family portion of the development. The more intensive land use amendment would be to the approximately fourteen acres of regional commercial land at the northwest corner of the site. The proposed amendment would change the acreage north of Sand Creek from regional commercial to planned development to allow up to a two hundred and fifty-eight unit multifamily apartment complex. With regard to density, the general plan identifies the allowable density range for the single-family residential portion of the project site as from one point one to five dwelling units per acre, to the mid-range of three dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for the project without the overlay on the school site is three point seven dwelling units per acre, and it is four point six four dwelling units per acre with the overlay. Per the general plan's mid-range density policy, densities above the mid-range can be permitted at the discretion of the City Council through the exercise of transferable agricultural credits, or if a significant amount of amenities are incorporated into the project, extensive off-site public improvements are installed, or other significant improvements of community-wide benefit are provided. In this case, the applicant is proposing to provide certain amenities as listed in the development agreement as improvements of community-wide benefits. In addition to the land use amendments, the circulation element of the city's general plan is also included as part of the general plan amendment. The specific change would eliminate the extension of San Jose Avenue out to Hydeone Ranch Road. Instead, San Jose Avenue would be extended north to connect and terminate at a signalized intersection with the Sand Creek Road extension. The applicant has also requested a rezon for this property in order to accommodate the land use changes and the subdivision. Currently, the property is owned Plan Development Thirty-Six. Due to the proposed land use changes, this designation would need to be amended to reflect the proposed land uses and establish development standards for the single-family and multifamily residential uses. The applicant has also requested one addition to the conditionally permitted uses within the regional commercial sub-area, Sub Area C, which would allow gas stations with or without a car wash, subject to approval of the conditional use permit. No other changes are being proposed for the regional commercial or open space sub-areas. So to give a little clearer picture as to what the results would be from the proposed general plan amendment and rezon changes, this chart provides a quick comparison between the 2006 approved but expired project and the current proposal. As you can see, the proposed development would increase the number of single-family units from one hundred and sixty-six up to three hundred and fifteen, should the overlay be implemented in place of the school site. The proposed development would also add two hundred and fifty-eight multifamily units, decrease the regional commercial acreage from the originally thirty-four point five eight acres down to eighteen point seven two acres, and also reduce the permanent open space from forty-nine point five one acres to twenty-eight point two five acres. There is also a small reduction in the park acreage. So in regard to the rezon, the specific development standards for Sub Area A, which is the single-family residential portion of the Plan Development Thirty-Six, have been written to accommodate the designs for the homes on the single-family parcels and are generally consistent with other approved single-family products, and include a four thousand five hundred minimum lot size, twenty-foot front yard setbacks, fifteen-foot rear yard setbacks, five-foot side yard setbacks, and a maximum height of thirty-four feet. Lot coverage would be limited to forty percent for two-story homes and fifty percent for one-story homes. The proposed development standards for the multifamily apartments of Area B are typical for a development of this type and are similar to those of recently approved apartment projects. The development standard also limits the total number of units to two hundred and fifty-eight as a permitted use. The project site consists of a total of one hundred and thirty-seven point three acres. Of this acreage, twenty-eight point two five acres, Parcels G and N, are preserved as permanent open space, the majority of which is located along the western property line corresponding to hillside ridge lines. Along the northern property line and north of Sand Creek, Parcel A, totaling thirteen point nine eight acres, will accommodate the multifamily apartment project. Parcel C, consisting of eighteen point seven two acres and located just south of the creek, remains dedicated to future regional commercial uses, and no development of this site is anticipated with this project at this time. The remaining acreage located south of Sand Creek Road includes the eleven point three five acre potential school site, Parcel H, two park locations, a ten-foot trail connection to the Brentwood Hills subdivision to the south, and the two hundred and fifty-two single-family residential parcels. The single-family lot sizes would range from four thousand five hundred square feet to sixteen thousand nine hundred and twelve square feet. The remaining parcels are to be utilized for biotension areas for stormwater treatment. Access to the single-family development would be through two main access points, one along Sand Creek Road, and the other via the extension of San Jose Avenue from the south. The proposed map also includes an overlay for sixty-three additional single-family parcels, should the anticipated school site not materialize, which would bring the total single-family unit count to three hundred and fifteen. The terms for how this could develop are outlined in the development agreement. Due to a late request from Tri Delta Transit, staff has included one additional condition of approval for the map, which would require bus stops at four locations along both east and westbound Sand Creek Road to allow transit service to this area. The specific condition would read, "The developer shall install bus turnout from both eastbound and westbound Sand Creek Road at the intersection of Sand Creek Road and San Jose Avenue, and Sand Creek Road in the entrance to the multifamily apartment site on Parcel A, in coordination with Tri Delta Transit, and to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works concurrent with Sand Creek Road extension improvements." These bus turnout locations will also include bus shelters to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works. So that condition has already been added to the resolution, uh, should the Planning Commission desire to approve the map. This markup is merely to show how the proposed development would integrate into the neighborhood and align with existing Sand Creek Road and San Jose Avenue, as well as interface with the existing single-family residential development to the south. The area north of the project site within the Innovation Center of Brentwood, which is formerly Priority Area 1, is designated as Employment Center Light Industrial, which accommodates a wide range of jobs generating uses, including business parks, clean light industrial, research and development, professional operatives, and similar uses. This designation would also allow for regional destination, resort hotel, and conference center. The acreage to the west within the city of Antioch is designated in their general plan for open space and senior housing. The design review for the single-family homes includes five different models with three elevation styles each. These styles include Tuscan, French Cottage, and Craftsman. The models range in size from two thousand two hundred and fifty-one square feet to three thousand four hundred and sixteen square feet. All the plans are two-story and contain four to five bedrooms with three to four bathrooms, along with two car garages. There are a few elements of the design review that are not consistent with the city's adopted residential design guidelines. Therefore, in an effort to provide more consistency with the guideline, a condition has been added requiring the submission and approval of five additional home models with four elevations each, along with an additional elevation for the five plans currently proposed. Also conditioned is the requirement that two of these additional plans be one-story units, and new plans will also need to include at least one model with an alternative garage configuration, such as a side access return garage, and also include decorative garage doors. Additionally, the project is conditioned to plot single-story homes on at least fifty percent of the corner lots, and also on fifty percent of lots adjacent to Sand Creek Road and State Route 4 in order to reduce the amount of the development. The project includes two parks located within the single-family parcels that will be dedicated to the city. Parcel T, located west of the main access at Sand Creek Road, is one point seven four acres and will be designed as a neighborhood park. Flareton Park is Parcel J, which encompasses two point five six acres and will also be designed as a neighborhood park. The land free plans submitted with this application for the map are preliminary, and pursuant to the Brentwood Union's book code, a conceptual park plan will need to be submitted to the Parks and Recreation Commission for review and final approval of the park designs, programming, and amenities. Access to the multifamily site, Parcel A, will be from one ingress egress point at Sand Creek Road, which will provide right-in, right-out turning movements only. A secondary twenty-foot wide emergency vehicle access point is provided at the northeast corner of the south site out to Old Sand Creek Road. The multifamily development consists of a total of two hundred and fifty-eight units clustered into eleven three-story apartment buildings, with each building containing between twelve and thirty-six units. The project is anticipated to include eighty-four one-bedroom units and a hundred and seventy-four two-bedroom units. In addition to the units themselves, an approximately seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-three square foot clubhouse with a pool and barbecue area is also included on the site. The multifamily development would include a total of five hundred and eight parking spaces. Our architectural style for the apartment buildings is a modernized mission. The garage buildings and the clubhouse are proposed as one-story structures and utilize the same materials and architecture as the apartment buildings. In addition to the pool and barbecue area, gazebo, and pep park are included with the project plans, but their location is not identified on the site plan. Since this is a rather large apartment complex, facilities such as electric vehicle charging stations, a car wash area, and pot lots should also be made available to the residents. Accordingly, dress conditions are included requiring these amenities to be encompassed in the project building and landscaping plans. The developer is proposing to utilize a tubular steel fence designed with columns and caps surrounding the development. A development agreement has been included as part of this project. The key deal points of the proposed development agreement are as follows. In regard to the school site, by the time the development agreement is approved, the applicant must enter into an agreement with Brentwood Union School District to transfer the eleven point three five acre school site to the school district, uh, school site to the school district. At its meeting of August nineteen, the school board did approve the purchase and sale agreement for the school site. The existence of any such agreement does not guarantee that a school will be built here, but it is a necessary first step. Securing the ability of the school district to develop a school at this location has been a primary concern in processing this application. The second deal point is in regard to the residential overlay in lieu of the school site. If the school district decides not to acquire the school site within the time identified in the agreement with the applicant, then the applicant would be allowed to develop an additional sixty-three single-family homes on the school site, and the applicant will pay the city twenty-five thousand dollars for each of these additional single-family homes. These funds are to be used for a youth center or youth programming. The City Council will need to determine whether such funds for a youth center or programming constitute a sufficient community benefit should the school site not be realized. The next deal point is in regard to fire contributions. As with deciding of a future school, securing fire contributions for the East Contra Costa Fire Protection District has likewise been a high priority in processing this application. To this end, under the development agreement, the applicant will pay all impact fees adopted by the city as of the effective date of the development agreement to fund fire and medical support facilities operated by the East Contra Costa Fire Protection District, subject to the applicant's right to challenge the fees, and will also annex the project into or otherwise participate in any community facilities district established by the fire district prior to the project's first building permit being issued. It must be noted that the applicant has contested the basis of the fire impact fee recently adopted by the council, and the development agreement includes language requested by the applicant to acknowledge its ability to protest and challenge the fees. In regard to the Sand Creek Road right-of-way, in order to obtain the land necessary to develop the full extension of Sand Creek Road from its present termination point west of State Route 4 to the Antioch city limits, the city will sell to the applicant a small parcel of land, along with an otherwise amusable State Route 4 remnant parcel, and provide the applicant with development credits or payment of approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The next item is in regard to affordable housing compliance. In order to satisfy the city's affordable housing requirement to construct two percent of the residential units in the project as affordable units, the applicant has requested to pay in lieu fees versus constructing any deed restricted affordable housing on site. This method of compliance with the Affordable Housing Ordinance is thus included in the development agreement. In regard to the design and construction of an off-site trail connection, the applicant would design and construct an off-site trail connection along Sand Creek from the eastern boundary of the project beneath State Route 4 to the Old Sand Creek right-of-way, and provide funding in the amount of five hundred thousand- and provide funding in the amount of five hundred thousand for a pedestrian bridge, if a bridge is ultimately determined to be required. If construction of the pedestrian bridge is not begun by the time the development agreement expires, this payment for the pedestrian bridge would be returned to the developer. And finally, the development agreement would have an initial term of fifteen years with one potential five-year extension. This would mean that the rules, regulations, and policies that govern development of the project would essentially be fixed for the life of the development agreement. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, the city used the following methods to solicit public input on the draft environmental impact report. A notice of preparation for the draft EIR was released for a thirty-day public review period from August two, two thousand nineteen to September two thousand nineteen. A public scoping meeting was held on August twentieth, two thousand nineteen to solicit public comments regarding the scope of the draft EIR. The notice of preparation comment letters are included as an appendix D to the draft EIR. On June first, twenty twenty, the draft EIR was submitted to the State Clearinghouse for distribution to state agencies, resulting in a forty-five day public review period from June one, twenty twenty to July fifteen, twenty twenty. And on June one, twenty twenty, a notice of availability of the draft EIR was posted to the city's website and nailed to local agencies and interested members of the public. The draft EIR was made available for review for review on the city's website. All public comments received on the draft EIR were included within the final EIR along with the responses to comments. In conclusion, as mentioned initially, the Bridle Gate project has a lengthy history dating back to an initial submittal in two thousand one and a prior approval in two thousand and six that established the general plan land use designations and zoning standards that remain in effect today. It is a large site with a number of unique attributes and constraints to consider. It also has generated interest within the community, with many residents expressing significant concerns about the project. The general plan update adopted in two thousand fourteen established the vision for the community, which for Bridle Gate, among other things, includes approximately thirty-five acres of regional commercial development and single-family development at a density of approximately three dwelling units per acre. There are concerning aspects to the project, including the loss of thirteen point nine eight acres of regional commercial land, the density of the single-family development exceeding the mid-range identified in the general plan, and the development of at least portions of the existing hillborems and ridgelines. However, there are also some positive benefits provided by the project through the development agreement. These include the possible provision of a future elementary school site or funding for youth programming, um, and a trail connection beneath State Route Four, and provisions to address fire impacts. To facilitate the Planning Commission's review and consideration of the project, as well as to facilitate making a recommendation to the council this evening, staff has prepared resolutions to allow the commission to recommend that the city council approve the various actions associated with the development of this project, as well as a resolution whereby the commission could recommend that the city council deny the project. Therefore, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission consider the staff report, the findings set forth in each of the resolutions, any public comment given both prior to and at the meeting this evening, and the record of the proceedings in making its final determination to recommend either denial or approval of the project to the city council. Finally, as you may be aware, there is a legal settlement agreement between the city and the applicant that necessitates the Planning Commission take action tonight to either recommend approval or denial of the project. This recommendation will be presented to the city council at a public hearing at a September fifteenth special city council meeting. Lastly, I did want to mention that the city has received approximately forty emails opposing the Bridle Gate project, which have been forwarded to the commission for your review. Concerns raised in these emails generally included pass-through traffic within the existing neighborhood to the south, grading of the hillside, conversion of regional commercial land to high-density apartments, impacts to Sand Creek, concern regarding the oil wells, impacts to emergency services, in particular fire, loss of open space, air quality, and the reduction of neighborhood park acreage. And with that, for this evening's meeting, a staff and consultant team have been assembled, virtually of course, to address any questions or concerns that you may have. And this concludes staff's presentation. With that, I'll turn it back over to Chairperson Hankins. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. At this time, commissioners have any questions of staff? Commissioner Pippen?
No, none at this time.
Commissioner Roberts?
Okay, when you ask if there are any questions, any questions to what was just read, correct?
Yes, to the staff. Right, to our staff.
I have quite a few, but let me just start with, it was mentioned in the report that there was going to be some kind of fire, uh, some kind of fire understanding, uh, some fees that could in fact be challenged. Um, but I want to go beyond that, and I don't know if this is the time to do it. So I guess my concern or my question to that report, what in fact has the developer agreed to concerning uh, fire protection and safety as it relates to this co-op city that, and that's my term, um, that is before us this evening? What exactly are we looking at for fire protection and safety and law enforcement relative to this that's in front of us? There's a lot I have to say, but that's where I want to start.
Well, I can jump in, and please, either Ms. Wodenski or Mr. Ogden, if you want to add to this, please, please help me out here. Um, they, the development agreement does require that the applicant will pay all the adopted impact fees um, that the city has in place. Those impact fees would go towards facilities. Um, in addition, the development agreement um, dictates that they would annex into any future community facilities district that the fire district establishes. Um, that CFD would contribute to, for lack of a better term, boots on the ground, employees and services. Um, is there anything that Ms. Wodenski or Mr. Ogden would like to add?
Well, yeah, and that's what, so right now, we have three stations and nine firefighters that I guess oversee from Bethel Island to Oakley, uh, some of the unincorporated areas of Marsh Creek, including Brentwood. So I guess my question is, and you just mentioned it, that they would be willing to consider putting a facility or funds to be put, place a facility, uh, an additional facility. But I'm just trying to figure out, is that enough? One additional facility for this, and it's my term, this development? One additional, or were they open to, um, additional? I mean, can, have they narrowed it down to one? Is my question. And you indicated boots on the ground with that nine firefighters. Um, hope you understand what that means. Boots on the ground, are they talking about hiring additional firefighters?
Well, in regard to the first part of your question, the impact fees would be placed on all new development that as we move forward. So would the Bridle Gate project exclusively be responsible for an additional fire station? I would say the answer to that would be, it would be more of a collaborative thing between all future development and not just the Bridle Gate project. So in regard to the community facilities district, that is not just for the city of Brentwood. That is for the entire East Contra Costa Fire Protection District, which includes the city of Oakley, um, the unincorporated areas of Nathan, and, um, you know, the other unincorporated county areas. So those CFD funds would not just be for firefighters for the city of Brentwood. That would be for firefighters for the entire district.
Okay, that's great. If I may, while I have you on the communication regarding fire, having had one just recently in Brentwood, um, do you know how long it took to contain that fire? I understand that the city council member, not the city, yeah, city council, city manager has joined us. How long did it take to contain that fire in Brentwood? Couple of weeks ago.
Personally, I do not have that information. I don't know if anyone else might within the city.
Well, I'm interested in knowing how long it took to contain it and how many firefighters were dispatched. Again, this is a big project and it's a concern of mine. I know it's a concern for others, but I'm asking the question and sort of for me to render a fair answer after all this, I need some answers to these questions.
Commissioner Roberts, this is Tim Ogden, city manager. I'd be glad to type that question in part. I think a little context is relevant first, and that is that the project that's before you can only be assessed to cover the impacts of the project itself. So while there's no doubt and widespread understanding that the district has current existing deficiencies, the state law will not allow us to charge that those impacts of existing deficiencies to future development. So this project, at least according to the fire district, will address the future fire impacts of this development.
I appreciate that answer. Um, while I have you, how many developments have occurred in Brentwood since the conception of Bridle Gate? Do you have any, anybody have an answer to that? I think that was, what, two thousand and one? How many homes have been built in Brentwood? Anybody?
Uh, that would be something we'd have to research and get back to you with information on that. I don't have that directly at my fingertips.
Okay, all right, that's fair. Um, can you help me understand how many nine-one-one calls have taken place in twenty nineteen? And how many nine-one-one calls in twenty twenty? And what were the top three incidents? And I'm asking these questions because again, that's quite a few folks will bring it into a development. I'd just like to know what the heavy is on this. Nine-one-one calls for two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty? And then how many times in two thousand nineteen was the fire department dispatched? Anybody got an answer to that?
Commissioner Roberts, I can answer that the fire district on their website does have significant statistics they publish every month that shows how many responses they addressed and what their response time was. So that's not information that we're prepared to share tonight, but that information is available on their website.
I appreciate that. Appreciate that. Um, okay. In November twenty, two thousand and five, I'd like to know why did the Planning Commission for Bridle Gate, the Bridle Gate project, and requesting staff prepare the necessary resolution for denial of the general plan amendment proposal? Can anybody answer that? That was in two thousand and five.
Um, perhaps our planning manager, Eric Noltenius, he has more information regarding that fire approval. Um, Mr. Noltenius, do you have any comments on that?
Good evening, Chairperson Hankins, members of the commission. That was a long time ago. Um, I don't have the file with those older staff reports in front of me. I do know that the initial project, when it was submitted in two thousand and one, went through a number of iterations in terms of how the site was to be laid out. Um, so I don't recall specifics from the November two thousand and five meeting, but I do know that the commission was not satisfied with the project as it stood at that time, and so moved forward with that decision. And then the project was subsequently revised to the point where it could be approved later in two thousand and six.
This is for city manager. And I, you'd mentioned that he was kind of standing in for the fire department as a chief for both the police department and the fire department, um, try to answer some of his questions. So with about five hundred and ten units, and I'm thinking five hundred and seventy-three without a school, I'm just trying to understand the impact on both the fire department and the police department. And it would have been real nice for both the chiefs to be present at this meeting to have that discussion. I know I received a flyer. Didn't seem like it was in favor. Didn't say one way or the other, but it mentioned three stations and nine firefighters for this, this area and the unincorporated, which falls way short, way short. Um, so I guess, city manager, I'd like to know, um, East Contra Costa Fire Protection, um, is my understanding that they are, and I have the document here. The applicant has indicated that it believes the fire impact fees recently adopted by the city has spawned. Therefore, the fees may be paid under protest. I think that's what I heard and what I've read. So if we're already at a place of possible protest, how do we move forward, Mr. City Manager, with security? I can't speak about the unincorporated areas. I can speak about the area I live in, which is Brentwood. Um, fire? How do we, how do we manage that? I think it's more than a fair question.
Commissioner Roberts, I would agree with you. I think that's more than a fair question, considering the noted potential protest of the fees or challenge of them. Uh, there will be enforcement of the agenda once you've conducted the public hearing where the applicant is actually present and is maybe best situated to answer your question directly on that. Like, great question.
I appreciate that. Okay, well, two questions left. Can you inform me if the original owners of this LLC are the same as they were in two thousand and one? Same partners? Does anybody have an answer to that? Or is that something I have to wait to speak to the developers about?
Um, well, certainly, I can speak to that. Um, it's definitely the same group of developers. They have different corporate names that they use for different developments. Um, so it's the same family of developer groups and again, maybe the applicant can speak more as to whether that entails different ownership or not. But from my understanding, it was Discovery Builders back in two thousand and six, and that is who the application is under that name as well for the majority of it, for this, for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Um, how much revenue would How much revenue will the city generate from this development?
That I do not have a figure for you. I mean, there's, there's planning fees that the applicant has paid to process the application. There'll be engineering fees that they will pay for the final map and grading and improvement plans. And then as they move forward to the building phase, there'll be billing permit fees for both the single-family and multifamily projects.
Okay. So the result in the loss of the limited commercially zoned land in the city and the attendant loss of sales tax revenue that helps maintain the quality of life that Brentwood these residents and visitors enjoy is an issue. And I'd like to know if we're planning on overcoming that, if we look at another area, now that this area could find its way out of that commercial ideal? Is there someplace else that, I mean, is this just going to be a dead loss to the city?
Essentially, should be, and ultimately, the city council decide to approve the project, it would result in the net loss of 14 acres of regional commercial land. Correct.
And that goes along with the employment that could very well have come from that, correct?
That's correct. There would be some employment during, in the construction of the project, but once that's completed, there would be, you know, no further employment, not like a, a commercial center would provide.
Okay. So further loss of the commercial land for the additional residential use that we found to be inconsistent, this is something that I've read from the staff report, with manufacturing a balanced land use plan and a diverse, stable, self-sustaining revenue mix in order to generate the resources necessary to sustain essential and desired city services. Did I get that right? That's something that I read in the staff report, but I'm wondering, because you added something to the staff report, if that's changed?
No, I don't. Anything that's in the staff report, there's nothing that's happened since that date that's changed, no.
Okay, so the loss of the commercial use here would result in the attendant loss of associated sales tax revenue? Does that, did I get that?
That potentially is correct, yes.
Well, that's all I have for now. I've said quite a bit, but I'm not going to off the show. I'll let my colleagues chime in and then I'll wait on the developer. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Ziegler, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, but I will.
Okay. Vice Chair Cross, do you have any comments?
At this time, oh, at this time, I do not have any questions for staff. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we will open up the public hearing. At this time, we'll give the applicant a chance to speak. They have a total of 10 minutes. Please let us know if you'd like to save any of those minutes for rebuttal. And I believe we have Mr. Parsons to speak.
Yeah, hi, can you, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, thank you guys so much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. I also appreciate the very detailed staff report that Debbie provided. I'm here with the owner of the property, Albert Sino III. I can confirm that the ownership is still the same as it was when we first initially put together our original site plans. I'm also here with a colleague of mine, Douglas Chen. He's a registered civil engineer and can answer some of the civil engineering questions. I also have various members of our design team. They're not panelists, but I have the architect from Lovey and Campos available and then I have some legal counsel available as well. So if there's any other questions that may need a legal response or an architectural response, I'd be happy to confer with them. So just in general, you know, kind of, and again, getting to what Debbie said, you know, sort of how we got here. We took a look at this, when the general plan got updated in 2014 and it essentially designated the area south of Sand Creek Residential and north of Sand Creek Commercial, then there was the open space, that converted that area from a special planning area to a straight general plan land use designation. And I'm going to see if I can share a screen with you guys to show you a few exhibits. Let me see if I can get to the desktop here. Let me see if you guys can follow me on this.
Just get a project report.
Sorry, I'm just working on this, so apologize if this isn't. Doug, when I go to Chair's screen, where am I? All right, guys. Can you still hear me, Commissioners?
Yeah, we can still hear you.
All right, give me just a second.
And this is, this is Tim Ogden. Again, our host of the meeting may need to delegate that responsibility so that Mr. Parsons can actually share his screen. So if Joe or April
I gotta get it from the desktop.
Thank you. Through the chair, he is a presenter, so he can share.
As I, as I anticipated, I was going to have technical difficulties, so I'll just keep talking. I'll, I'll do my best to speak through this. I know there are some exhibits that I sent to Eric that I wanted him to share with you guys. But essentially, south of Sand Creek, there was a land use designation and as Debbie pointed out, it was one to five units per acre. And so we ran the density calculations and per the general plan, you take, the general plan is calculated on gross acreage. So when we calculate the density, just the area south of Sand Creek with the school site, that acreage is approximately 97.57 acres. And when you divide that by our unit count, you get to about 2.58 units per acre, which is below the mid-range. Now, when we insert the overlay, that gets to 315 units and that gets to above the mid-range density. The only reason we have proposed the overlay is we're not sure if the school district is going to purchase the school site. We very much want them to purchase the school site. We've been coordinating with the districts and their consultants. And we do have a purchase and sale agreement with them where we're essentially selling them the property at a nominal rate. It's, it's all designated residential land use and we're selling it for an agricultural land use rate. So our intent is to hopefully have the school district complete their due diligence, get their approvals from the state architect and the California Department of Education and purchase that school site. But the way this, this evolved is, I want to say we went to two or three different land use subcommittees two or three years ago and the school district and the city approached us and said, look, we want a school site here. Can you accommodate it? And when you look at the topography of the site, it slopes from, it slopes from the west to the east down towards Highway Four. And the only way to accommodate a sort of 11-acre flat school site is by cutting and filling that area and making it a flat 3%. So what we did is we met with our engineers, worked with the school district and came up with a land plan that had us cutting and filling to where we could provide this flat plateau pretty much that is necessary for a school site. When you're doing a residential subdivision, you can have a lot of varying pad elevations and things like that and up to 12% roads, but in this case, we couldn't. So that's how we got here. We went back to the Land Use Development Subcommittee and in exchange for the additional grading and additional design and additional cost and conveyance of that landed a discounted rate is what necessitated our request for an increased unit count. But again, based on the gross density, it's still below the mid-range with the school site. So that means, consistent with the existing general plan, if we came in and submitted the site plan as we show it right now with the school site, we'd be consistent with the 2014 general plan, which eliminated the special planning area. Getting to the area that we're proposing conversion from commercial to multifamily, we just, we looked at this and we've looked at it for years going, how is this going to be a viable commercial site? That was a bunch of discussions with city staff, multiple discussions with the Land Use Development Subcommittee. So we came with a multifamily concept, which is very consistent with a lot of the multifamily that's recently approved in PA 1 at a very high density. So that is another request to do multifamily there because we don't think it's viable for commercial. I've done a lot of work, we do a lot of commercial development through Contra Costa County. I'm here with Albert. His family owns hundreds of thousands of square feet of commercial power centers and I don't think I need to tell you even pre-pandemic, the problems that this region is facing related to commercial development. We're struggling with many of our places right now and I know many other shopping centers within the region in Pittsburgh are struggling. And you know, there's really been a huge shift away from the traditional commercial retail to e-commerce and industrial, which is why we're seeing a boom in industrial development and commercial development really struggling. So that's how we came up with our land plan. We're experienced builders in Pittsburgh. We build a lot of homes and Albert, you want to say something?
I was just, Commissioners, Albert Sino, just to reiterate, and I know we're running out of time, but just to go back to one of the Commissioners' comments about where the project stood years and years ago, 2001, we went through the process and I can't really recall, other than we, I think we just had some planning commissioners that maybe didn't like the name. I appealed it to council and was able to get an approval. That approval though, Streets of Brentwood wasn't built and I'm talking fast. There was no utilities. Highway Four extension came through. The bypass authority took some land. We then worked with the bypass authority to extend the water and sewer lines. Everything was between a quarter and a half a mile away. We eventually brought all those lines underneath what Highway Four is now, the underpass, and did some embankment fill. And so even back 15, 18 years ago, the property wasn't at a point where it could be developed anyways. We received the approval, things drug on, went through a recession and here we are today and we've been processing it for many, many years. Louis, maybe you can talk real quick about fire and handling that.
Yeah, and fire too. You know, yes, in the development agreement, we've indicated we have no issue annexing into a community facilities district and we have no issue paying fire impact fees in accordance with AB 1600. We do that in most communities we work in and we pay fire impact fees. The issue we had when this Fire Protection District fee came, there were many components of this that didn't make sense to us. We build fire stations. Our company builds fire stations. We've built them for Contra Costa Fire Protection District. We don't understand the construction costs. We don't understand a lot of the costs.
Let me just go real quick. We met with Chief Helmick. We had meetings with the city. The city asked for 11, or the chief asked for $11 million. We said no. He said you have to have a fire apparatus to get up to your apartments if you're going to build them that's three stories. I said, well, we're in City Hall. It's over four and it doesn't have a, a fire truck with the ladder on it. And we're going to pay the fire fees. That's what everybody else is doing. There's been upwards between 15,000 to 20,000 homes that have been built since 2001. We're annexed into the city limits. We have the zoning except for where we're proposing the apartments. Everything's consistent. We know there's a lot of hair on the project and I'm just getting into the, into the, a little bit of the weeds here, but we know there's a lot of hair on the project. We'd sure like to build it. We've been, we've built thousands of homes in the city through the tough times. We pulled 100% of all building permits in the city from 2009 probably to 2011 for a couple of years. Not other, not one other builder was around but us. And so we're not entitled to anything. You know, we come hat in hand. We want to be a good neighbor, but you know, we know there's a lot of people upset about it, traffic. We get it. We understand it. We, we know that the neighbors are upset and we know that the people around and you know, the city cringes when they talk about it because, you know, they're getting all these comments and, and so forth. You know, what can I say? Everybody else has gotten their projects approved and built and so we don't want to be held accountable for all the sins of the city's past and now we're waiting for this project to come through and it's got to, it's got to pay for everything. That shouldn't be the way it works and we understand it's the, the stop, you know, the Sino haters.
Thank you, Ms. Sino. That's appreciated.
And we know that there's the Sino haters out there and so we're just asking for a fair shake anyways. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do any of the Commissioners have questions for the applicant? We'll begin with Commissioner Ziegler.
Not for the applicant directly, so maybe we can circle back. I'm curious on the math that they're using, where we're talking just south of Sand Creek that only 7.5 acres, doing the math, it's 2.5 units when you add the, when you add the overlay in. And I'm curious, maybe we can come back to a group discussion or if, if Ms. Hill can address that, because when we look at the reports and things like that, we are being told that the density is outside the guideline. So I just want to get a little clarification there.
I can certainly address that now or, or later, whichever you prefer.
If it's okay now for the chair.
Okay, so the general plan density for exceeding the mid-range, the first very, very first sentence of that whole section talks about for each residential designation. So that does not include open space designations, which is what the applicant's calculation is including. And if you go back to the very first approval back in 2006, that's kind of, that's how it was calculated back then. So the, the way the city is calculating the density is not different than how it's been calculated in the past. We do not include the open space as part of the calculation, only the areas of the general plan that are designated residential. So that, that, we'll tell you what the difference is between the calculations that they proposed this evening and, and what's in the staff report and what's actually been on their best intended subdivision map from the get-go. That, does that address your question, Commissioner Ziegler?
Yes, it does for that one. Thank you. And then for the chair, and again, I'm not sure if this is going to go to the applicant or to Ms. Hill, but I know there's several steps down here in just looking at the design review where they were looking at four different elevations for every 25 units. And I know the city, I believe, has put in some wording to expand that. And was there a comment back from the applicant in agreement with that? Again, I know that's way down the line. We still have to do EIR, general plan, but I was just curious what, what response to staff, that staff received on that.
Yes, the applicant was very receptive of those changes and did not have any issues with moving forward with providing additional plans.
At this time, I don't have any additional questions that will go to discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Fittin?
Yeah, Mr. Parsons or Mr. Sino, can you elaborate on when you said you paid fees in accordance with AB 6020 for the most part? Can you expand upon that?
Yeah, when I said, there's some cities that don't have CFDs for fire services. So I said, in other cities, we always do it for the most part. If the city doesn't have a CFD, an AB 1600 fee is a development impact fee and we always pay those in each city. City of Brentwood has a variety of impact fees for parks. You don't have to, but the city does. They have, you have, you have impact fees for roadway impacts. And at present, the city, East Contra Costa Fire Protection District is in the process of bringing forth or has brought forth an updated fire impact fee. And we didn't comment on it late. We commented on it early. We commented to the fire board, to the chief, and it's specifically related to our concerns with assumptions they've made in their study related to population projections. The sources cited for the population projections, outdated population projection information, inconsistent inconsistencies with data from ABAQ, and inconsistencies with what we believe are adequate and current construction costs, considering we've built, I think, I don't know, over, over a dozen fire stations and three or four in Contra Costa Fire Protection Districts. So the, a lot of the assumptions that that East Contra Costa Fire Protection District is using, but their consultant are using, are very questionable to us. And so, that's all, we're just saying, we, we don't understand this report, and, but, but we have no problem paying an impact fee. We, we pay them all the time. But we look at everything. When the city adopts any impact fee or updates to their capital improvement, we al, we always look at it because we have such a large interest in the city. And getting back to another question, I wanted to, about the density, just while I have a, if you look at Section 9.2 of the general plan, and I went over this with Eric Nolte last week, so I don't know if he had a chance to look at this, but a quote from it says, gross acreage shall include land dedicated for any public use, and densities specified in the general plan are expressed in units per gross acreage. I've calculated density many times on other projects, and I've always in corp, always included any land, open space, schools, you include land for anything. And, and so, I, I just, I just have a fundamental disagreement, and I'm just reading a strict interpretation that says gross acreage shall include land dedicated for any public use. The area that's open space, we have an agreement, and we're going to be, that, that's not, that's going to be, we're not going to be developing that land, and it's, it's likely going to be owned by a third-party district and remain in open space in perpetuity. So we, so I, I just disagree with it, but it's neither here nor there. I just wanted to point that out. When we come in, if we came in with a site plan, that's how we would calculate the density consistent with the general plan, and, and how we have always calculated density in the city. We've always included the entirety of the land.
Okay, Mr. Parsons, if I may, going back to my question, I understand your answer to it was that you don't understand where they are with that. However, you have indicated that you believe the impact fee to be flawed, is that correct? Because that's a little different than not understanding.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just, I mean, have you guys looked at the MBS report? Are you guys in agreement with it? With the, with the, with the facility costs and the, and the population projections? Because I have. And I've commented not only to staff, but to the Fire Protection District. And so, yes, I'm in disagreement with the methodology and study that the third-party consultant completed for the East Contra Costa Fire Protection District on how they develop their fee.
Okay, and fees would be paid under protest, is that what I understand?
If we decide to, we are reserving our right to.
Okay, then that, that answers my question. Thank you for the clarification.
Anything else, Commissioner Fippen? That's all I have now, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
Commissioner Roberts. So, I appreciate the comment that was made there toward the end, and trying to get a fair shake in this proceeding. And I do believe you'll get that. We've had 121% increase in population here in Brentwood since 2000. I think we started at 23,000, we're up to 51, might be a little more than 51. So I, I have to come back to the fire piece, because 500 and some odd homes, 518 in forests without a school, 510 with a school, 573 without a school, far from 166, which was the original communication. I, I'm looking at, we've got three fire stations and nine firefighters, covering 250 square miles, which is about 128,000 residents in this neighborhood, in Brentwood and the unincorporated areas. And we should have twice that amount. I'm not putting this on you, I'm just letting you know that it is a concern for, for folks that live here in Brentwood. Most folks that live in Brentwood, it is, it's a concern. If something happens, God forbid, and this goes through, and something goes on in your development, something's going on somewhere else in Brentwood. I hear the comment that you just made about under protest with the fees, and I'm looking in, and I'm thinking to myself, and I, you know, and it's not on paper, I'm talking about real-life situations. How is it that we only have six stations and 18 firefighters for all this community now? And we're talking about bringing in another 518 homes, and we multiply that by two people, and that's just an assumption, to another thousand people, probably more like 1,500 with the apartments across the street, the condos across the street. And if we're talking about a school, that's a whole nother communication. I would think that you, you might want to feel some kind of way toward, might want to do something more than, than protest the fees that are really not going to resolve the problem. So I, I'm curious to know, my question, I said all that to say, what prompted your company to go from 166 units to 510? What happened there? I, I'm just curious to know.
Sure, Commissioner Roberts, this is Albert Sino. And, you know, when we looked at the project, when I looked at it years and years ago, going back almost 20 years, we saw commercial as something viable, even though the project was far away from all of its utilities, like I explained before.
Yes.
Project, project never got built. And so here we come in, and now we, we looked at it, and, you know, at one time, we were getting a feeling that the city wanted to see some different type of housing. So we took that commercial component on the other side of the creek there, and we put the apartments, and we thought that would be, you know, a nice add to the project, and we'd still have the commercial component in the middle. We obviously have the overlay. Now, if the school goes, then you would remove 60, approximately 65 units, 63 units from the site. And so, you know, with that, we, 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 post-COVID and even pre-COVID, you can go around, and you, you well know that if you drive to the streets of Brentwood, there's some major issues there. That property's changed hands a couple of times, and it's, you know, there's, the stores are going out one by one. And this is happening, it's not a, just a Brentwood issue. It's happening everywhere. It's happening in Antioch, it's happening in Pittsburgh, it's happening in Concord. It's all of, it's, it's a, it's a national issue right now. I mean, you can see, you can see the centers, like, a lot is being bought from the Amazons of the world, the prime, you see the, the little gray vans going up and down the roads. That is what our population, a percentage of the population is going to. COVID, Amazon, get it kickstarted with everybody because we're all at home. I believe, along with others, it's here to stay forever. Does that take a place of people walking into a retail center? It, it, it's going to for the day-to-day, but people still like to walk around and go into stores and touch and feel, you know, what they're going to buy. So we looked at that, and we just said, well, you know, it's, that's where, that's where we came up with the apartments. Plus, you know, with all due respect, we saw, we saw the Amber Lane project that I believe the planning commission here, they approved it just a couple of months ago, two months ago, or three months ago, whatever it was, four months ago maybe. And it had, it had no, it was just going to pay the fire fee, it wasn't going to give any cash contributions, certainly not $11 million, not even $50,000 to the fire district. Fire district supported it with open arms, and projects prior to that, hundreds and hundreds of units. I mean, it, that, that project is one-half of what we're doing here, and it was greeted with open arms, and it was on a postage stamp, it was on 20 acres. This is well over 130, 135-ish acres, I, I don't know the exact acreage. But, you know, we look at it and say, well, this should be not an issue, we have the zoning, we have the general plan. PA 1, I mean, I don't know how many thousands of units are going to be there, and commercial, and there's going to be hundreds and hundreds of, thousands of square feet. I mean, you talk about the traffic and the first responder, and what you're going to need for fire. So far, it hasn't, it hasn't paid anything, and every project prior hasn't paid their fair share. They're paying just the fee, there's the land that the fire district has, there's the three stations, it has other land. I'm not here to blame anybody who put their hand in the cookie jar and where the money all went, you know, but look at COVID. You wanted to buy toilet paper, you were buying a roll of toilet paper for 30 cents. After COVID, now it's $4.30 a roll, or $10 a roll. Is that right? No. I mean, I don't feel good when I have to go and, and pay my money, and I wish I could pay that under protest and say, you're, you're gouging. But I don't know, when we say we're protesting, we're saying, all we're saying is, you can't look back at the sins of the past and now, and back into, reverse engineer, saying, I need $100, when you have to look forward and say, I'm only, I'm only allowed to get $30. Oh, I want the $100, I want to fix everything in the past, and I'm going to lay it on this development and maybe a few others that come forward. But we've had this conversation with Chief Helmuth. He approved several projects against everybody's discussions, and I'm looking at it going, well, I'm just following the rules too. I'm not happy about it, but I'm following the rules. I'm not doing anything more or anything less than the other 15,000 to 20,000 homes that have been approved. Now, I, we are, we're doing more.
We're doing a CFD.
But I'm not, I'm not fighting the city, I'm not fighting, I'm, I'm a little bit, I get a little upset when I don't get a fair shake. It shouldn't take me years and years to get this project through. When the city wants something, they ram it through. And I'm just going to talk frank, I mean, that's just the way it is. People don't like that frank talk, well, that's the truth. And this project does a lot for the city. It's going to do a lot. It's going to pay millions upon millions upon millions of dollars, you know. If building credit in Brentwood right now is $80,000 to $100,000, depending on what size house you build, 65% to 70% of that is going to go straight to the city. So the 500 units, 65,000, I don't know, it's $30 million in building fees that goes straight to the city. You're going to have commercial? God willing, I can get some users there. I think we can. You know, I, I'm hoping we can. It's front and center, right off the interchange. It should be a great place for people to, to have some retail centers. I, I don't, I don't know if it's going to, you know, if it's going to be in the next 12 months or 24 months, but if the project gets approved, we're going to immediately try to do our best to get some users in there. And Sand Creek's going to get extended, that's, you know, it's got to work with this, some of the developers to the west. That will help the response. Instead of driving all the way around to get to the hospital, you're going to be able to get a possible straight shot. The school, obviously, you know, we all know about the school, and, you know, the school districts, you know, I was at the hearing, they approved the, the agreement. I think they're excited. I think, you know, I'm hearing some, some about the, you know, some of the parents in town, they're excited for the school, you know, it's, but, you know, I'm doing my part with the school. I mean, I can't hope it if it's already going to be at capacity if it gets built. I mean, I hope it's a success. I hope the city, or I hope the school district goes through with it. We want them to, you know, and we're going to grade the site and put all the utilities in. It's almost a gift, you know, they're, I think they're only paying, they're...
Commissioner Roberts, did he answer your question? Or do you have anything further for him on fire?
I'm just talking, that's where we're at.
I appreciate it. I appreciate your frankness, and, yeah, I, not right now. I might circle back with the gentleman, but not right now. Thank you so much for your answer, I appreciate your response and candor.
Thank you.
Thank you too, Mr. Sino. Commissioner, Commissioner Cross, do you have anything for the applicant?
You know what? At this point, all of my primary concerns have already been spoken through, thanks to the questions of the preceding Commissioner. So at this time, I'm okay, so thank you for inviting me to speak.
Okay, I think we've cut all of the Commissioners. I don't have any further questions. Thank you to the applicant for all of your input. We are going to open it up to public comment. The city has received 40 public comments regarding this item that were sent via email or otherwise for our consideration. Copies of those comments will be made available on the city's website on the Planning Commission's agendas page. So at this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission. Remarks are limited to three minutes, excuse me, per person. So if you would, raise your hand if you would like to speak. Once you are called upon, we will call three people in a row, you'll be unmiked, and once you are speaking, please unraise your hand. If you are on the phone and would like to speak, you can, for most phones, you can dial star three to raise your hand. So at this time, I will turn it over to Commissioner Fippen to call out our speakers.
Thank you, Chairperson Hankins. I will start out with the first three in the queue, and one of them is here with the hand raised. I do not see the other, oh, and I do see another one. So Kathy Griffin, Sandra Myers, and Antonio Xavier, Antonio Xavier, in that order, please. Kathy Griffin, you can begin. You're muted right now.
Oh, I thought...
You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. I'm so sorry. First time I've done this. So I wanted to talk tonight to urge the Planning Commission to recommend denial to the city council on this project. I expand on several reasons for the project's denial. This project will reduce the available commercial land and convert it to residential use. No rezoning of commercial designated acreage should be allowed at this time. The city has just allocated $315,000 for the purpose of undertaking the review of our zoning ordinances, and as promised, residents' opinions will be essential, sorting out key zoning decisions over the next year. Here's a start, don't entertain any general plan amendments and rezones embedded in this project. The scope of the project has tripled since its inception in '06, when it was approved for only 166 homes. Besides asking for 510 units, this plan asks to exceed the mid-range density policy by paying more to the East Contra Costa Fire Protection District, an unknown potential sale of school property, or alternately, $1.5 million for a youth center. I ask that you deny the sale of Brentwood for increased density, it's not worth it. Allowing the division of the park designated land is not beneficial to the residents. This land is also considered mostly unusable by the developer for reasons such as varied utilities, which also severely limits possible park amenities to next to nothing. This has been a continuing problem in Brentwood. Fire protection has worsened following response times in the general plan miserably. The developer says he'll pay all impact fees for fire in emergency, and yet is also contesting the newest fee schedule. We know the cost is passed along to the homeowner anyway, so furthermore, this project proposes 11 three-story apartment buildings for which we have no fire equipment. This EIR has understated traffic and circulation hazards using outdated studies and data, and frankly, doesn't make sense. Certainly, if you travel in the vicinity every day, much less when school's in full session, their traffic flows will never work. Cars will certainly exit the bypass at Sand Creek and cut through Bridel Gate on San Jose Avenue to get to Brentwood Hills West or San Jose Avenue neighborhoods east, creating a dangerous residential mess and eventually endangering schoolchildren. Furthermore, the terminus of Sand Creek and not completing the Hydorn Ranch intersection should not be allowed, and there's no western route in their circulation plan, which is also in direct conflict to goals and policies in the general plan circulation element. For these reasons and many more, I ask the Planning Commission to recommend denial of this project to the city council. Thank you.
Commissioner number two, lower your hand now. Just a reminder to everyone, when you're speaking, thank you.
Sandra Myers is next, but I don't see her at this time, so that would be Antonio Xavier. So that would be Antonio Xavier. Antonio?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
My name is Antonio Xavier and I am a resident of Shadow Lakes. I am against any rezone or amendment to the general plan required by this project because the proposed changes go against public interest and are not consistent or compatible with the general plan. Brentwood needs more commercial development. A rezone to replace already approved commercial zoning with residential zoning harms the economic future of Brentwood and goes against the public interest. I will let other speakers cover that in more detail tonight. I want to spend the rest of my time on traffic. Brentwood has major traffic circulation issues. Local residents use San Jose to pass through the Brentwood Hills and Shadow Lakes residential neighborhoods to reach Balfour. Local residents also drive through the Sand Creek Shopping Center to reach Sand Creek. I ask the planning commission and staff to look at their copies of the Brentwood Circulation Diagram on page 13 of the general plan. The circulation element takes our current problems into consideration and identifies the need for alternate routes in the surrounding area. The current general plan calls for both Sand Creek and San Jose to serve as east-west routes that provide direct access to a future major arterial route running north and south and connecting Lone Tree directly to Balfour. This is future planning. The current general plan is a great idea. It removes traffic from residential neighborhoods and provides multiple exit routes for the nearby communities. I would like to contrast that with the proposed project map listed on page 149 of the final EIR. The proposed project completely removes the San Jose option for an east-west route by redirecting San Jose north to connect to Sand Creek. Furthermore, the placement of housing along the western and southern border of the project walls off any possible access to San Jose from future road development south and west of this project. The proposed project fails to ensure the city's circulation network is a well-connected system and fails to consider the context of surrounding land uses and the needs of all roadway users as set forth in the circulation goal on page 156 of the draft EIR. I ask the planning commission not to recommend the project at this time because the proposed changes go against public interest and are not consistent or compatible with the general plan. Brentwood needs more commercial development and Brentwood residents deserve better traffic circulation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Antonio. Next, we have Rod Flohr, Cinziana Todor, and Jovita Mendoza. Can you please be ready and queue? And go ahead, Rod Flohr, and unmute yourself, please. Antonio, you can lower your hand when you're done speaking. Rod, are you there?
Can you?
We can hear you now, Rod.
I'm having trouble. Can you talk?
We can.
Okay. All right. Here we are again with another overly ambitious application. This is his Measure L all over again. They just run all over the general plan and hope we'll do them a big favor and let them have their way. The last time, the voters were able to speak directly, and I think you all know that the voters turned them down by a good 70%. We're hoping that you'll stand with us tonight. This is a, this application mocks our general plan. In their grief, these developers have completely ignored circulation density and usage requirements. Our city deserves better. We deserve better. We must deny this application. It's time to put all the developers wanting to build in our city on notice. Stick to our general plan or stay away. Brentwood is the jewel of East Contra Costa County. We want to keep it like that and our, our quality of life depends on it. Zoning to apartments or any kind of upzoning to higher density. Recently, the state has made it almost impossible to downzone any residential, so any kind of a, of a upzoning or zoning for residential where we had commercial before is probably not reversible. We need this commercial space. ULI has told us, the consultants, that we need to keep our land banked. So the applicant, you know, distinguishes between commercial, which he characterizes as retail, and industrial or other business uses, office buildings and such. But I really don't, we can, we can rezone from shopping centers to offices. I just don't want us rezoning from, from any kind of commercial to any kind of residential. It makes no sense to us. I also want to make a comment because the developer here, the applicant, is calculating density based on that school not being there. So he's adding in the open space or the space that the school will take. And I have personal knowledge of how that goes. Living in Deer Ridge, we, we have a golf course here and when the, when the, when the development was built, the zoning included that golf course. So my lot is smaller than it would have been according to zoning because of that golf course. And now the golf course is closed and they're wanting to build more stuff on it. And that makes my zoning tighter and I think that's taking away from me, that everybody, the developer's like, "Oh, well, that was then and this is now." So you have to be careful when you get these kind of promises from developers, and there will be many. But remember, you have to plan for the future. They're not going to always be here. 15 years is not that long of a time. It's been almost 20 years since Deer Ridge was built and now we're kind of out of luck, you know? The developer's gone, the zoning is what it is, and now they're going to increase my density unless I can do something about it. So I just don't want you to be, to be pushed around, shoved around. I, I hope you will all stand up for the city of Brentwood. And they don't have anything that we need. We don't need more houses. We're fine on arena. There, there's no real reason to give them any favors. Just let them stick to the general plan and submit an application that adheres to the general plan and then we should consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flohr. Cinziana Todor?
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm trying to unmute here.
We can. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. I have some click notes based on the discussion between commissioners and developer and all the, the other participants on the panel. First of all, I want to really thank you, Anita Roberts, for excellent questions. I do feel like you did your homework and you are really on our resident side. So again, a big thank you to you. This development is really too big for Brentwood. We don't need this right now as the previous speakers mentioned. And I'm also appalled to hear the potential of more car washes and gas stations. That's a very sticky issue around this town. And the developer keeps mentioning, "Commercial, commercial, it's not the future, let's not, let's switch to residential." However, they're citing what happens in Pittsburgh and Concord. I really hope they realize this is Brentwood. We, they will build in Brentwood if this goes through. And I really want to make sure they realize the geographic area we're talking about. And I don't understand why they're so mad. I, I, the attitude is really, really upsetting and I, I just can't agree with it. Going back to the rezone, that's a big no-no for Brentwood. We know that very well. I'm opposed to any rezone from commercial used to residential. We need to save the last of Brentwood's commercial parcels for when the time is right for, for their development in our economy. This should not even be taken into consideration because it diverged from our general plan and second, because Brentwood will run out of commercial zone land if we keep rezoning for more housing. There were reports and warnings all throughout the years provided by independent consultants from Urban Limit Institute, as recently as last year, and also Mr. Grindal from Economic Development Group warned Brentwood so many times that we are running out of commercial land. Why are we even allowing this developer to propose such a thing? Brentwood has enough residential development in construction right now, as well as approved, in approved status to satisfy the build-out growth. As numbers, as I can see on City of Brentwood's page, we have 2,700 or even less houses and 5,300 or less multi-unit housing left, left to build from the 10,000 designated in the general plan throughout 2035. So I think we are good on residential. Also, I want to point your attention to the section where, on the mitigation item. To me, everything that needs to be mitigated, it's so bad to begin.
Ms. Todor, I hate to interrupt you again, but your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Mr. Flohr, if you could lower your hand and Ms. Todor also. And we have Jovita Mendoza up next. And then following her is Sandra Myers, if you're still on the call, Sandra, and then John Wilson following Sandra Myers. Jovita?
Hi, well, my name is Jovita and I'm opposed to the rezone. I ask that you please stick to the general plan. First, the plan has items that cannot be mitigated and due to that, a councilperson has actually asked to be recused. In her letter from the FPPC, the traffic will increase from 14,829 to 15,039 trips a day. Also, the DEIR has determined that the project would result in emissions of certain air contaminants in excess of Bay Air Quality Management District thresholds of significance. So if this project is bad enough for a city councilperson to say, "I can't vote on it because I live so close," it's bad, it's bad for all of us that live up here. It shouldn't be allowed. And again, like Rod said, commercial cannot be zoned to apartments. Once we do away from commercial, there's no going back. Additionally, this is the foothold of PA 1. The change of this could be the catalyst to submarine the entire project. So what would keep any of the other landowners saying, "Well, you did it for Sino, let's do it for us?" So that's concerning. And if Mr. Sino's wants some commercial, I heard Costco's in the market for a piece of land. This would be a perfect spot for Costco on the other side where there's no homes. And he brought up Amberlane Apartments. I want to make it very clear that Amberlane Apartments was zoned. They did not ask for a rezone. So that was already in the plan because people were very, had forethought and planned out a perfect community with a perfect mix of commercial, homes, apartments, parks. And then my last thing is just the parks. We're getting to pocket parks. We're over the pocket parks. We want real parks where our kids can come and play. And the other thing is someone said it was kind of an insignificant amount of reduction. I did the calculation. It's a 17% reduction in the park. So it's, to me, 17%, if you gave me 17% more land, that would not be insignificant. All of my other comments regarding the, the concern of the wells, the concern of the schools being so close to each other and the traffic, air quality, noise, I've emailed all of those concerns to you. So I really hope that you read them and you take all of our concerns into consideration, but especially losing the commercial and maybe being the start of a ripple effect of losing all of our commercial on PA 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendoza. John Wilson, it doesn't, is Sandra Myers on the line?
Through the chair. It looks like Sandra Myers is dialed in, however, she does not have a mic enabled.
It looks like her microphone might not be enabled, so.
I believe she's the call-in user to our tech support.
Okay.
If they can unmute her.
So let's cue Sandra Myers up after John Wilson. John, you should be unmuted and ready to go, Mr. Wilson.
Hi there. My name's John Wilson and I live in Brentwood Hills, which is just to the south of this proposed community. And I agree with all the comments that I've heard so far from the public. And my focus is on the fact that this proposed development is on top of basically a toxic ecological environment. It is full of oil wells that still have plenty of gas and methane in them. I live in a, in a community, Brentwood Hills, that has been severely negatively impacted by this. It's unstable ground, so I know of personally three different houses that are having to spend literally tens of thousands of dollars because the houses are sinking into the ground near the oil wells. This community in Brentwood Hills, according to the city of Brentwood, they are not sure if an environmental impact report was ever done. They can't find any agreement that there's going to be any inspection of the wells. I do see in Bridel Gate that there, of course, is going to be an environmental impact report and they say there is going to be inspection. But I hold that with a grain of salt because that hasn't happened for Brentwood Hills and I don't know how thorough it's going to be. Even if all of that does happen, the people that, that buy houses there and the people they sell to and buy houses from them over the years, such as, is here, they'll be impacted by the fact that their houses are going to have to have methane barriers installed on the slabs to prevent the methane from accumulating in the house and create a toxic environment. They're going to have to have methane vents that go through the walls of the house to let all that active oil wells methane seep out. Their, their houses are going to be built on the same unstable ground that are going to slowly sink into the ground because of the oil wells there. And no amount of preparation of the ground is feasible to stop that from happening. So basically, this is just short-term thinking to put people in dangerous situations. And even if the first generation of homeowners know about it, the next ones won't. I went around personally and talked to hundreds of homeowners in my neighborhood and only approximately 1% of them knew that their houses were built on top of oil wells that had methane barriers on the slabs, that had vents going through the walls. It's really, in my mind, it is not, there's, there's no way to justify building on this land. I don't want Sino to build there and I honestly don't want anybody else to build there because of the situation. And I don't think that the city has paid enough attention to the situation. And they've basically forgotten this neighborhood that is already dealing with this problem and I fear that the same thing's going to happen with this next neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. If you could lower your hand, please. And Ms. Mendoza, if you could lower your hand, that would be appreciated. Next up is Sandra Myers on the call. I think you're queued up, Sandra, and following.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Can, oh, can you hear me?
We can. Just one minute. Following you will be Cindy and then Susan Harper. Go right ahead, Sandra Myers.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I am a 15-year park commissioner who is not currently on the park commission. I went off in December of 19. I spoke before your commission the last time we met in, I think, September on this project. And what I just wanted to point out was, it's another indication of not being able to meet the needs of all of our citizens with regard to parks. These parks that he's proposed are small and interior to the project only. I would like to see at least a four-acre site that's contiguous. We have more than doubled our population since 2003, when I went on the parks commission, yet we have not added one soccer field or one baseball diamond. Now, I know he is doing a lot in this project with trails and I appreciate that, but I would like to see if this project gets approved, which I hope it does not, but if it does, I want to see contiguous park acreage. And if he were to, if there were to be no school on this site, I think that would be a fabulous area to put a park where we can add a couple soccer fields and baseball diamonds. And there are utility lines running underneath one of these parks. I understand from park staff that those are city lines for, I don't know, runoff and that we're supposedly able to build over them, but this has happened before when we can't, so I'm a little skeptical. And that's really all I have to say on it, but thank you very much and putting up with me trying to get on the call. So thanks a lot. Bye.
Thanks, Myers. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Cindy and followed by Susan Harper and Benjamin Kellogg.
Excellent. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you, Cindy.
All right. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm, I'm going to be honest, I'm not going to, you know, cite any type of written feedback. I'm really going to add a few comments around just, I think, the overall attitude of our, the developer had concerned me and I actually wrote down a few comments there. You know, I understand that, you know, paying for the sins of prior, but the reality is, is things change, right? Our environment has changed, our lives have, have changed, and a lot continues to change. So with the houses that have come in and if perhaps they didn't pay their necessary amount, and the fact that we've lost firehouses is concerning. that, you know, they want to just kind of look at us or the fire district as comparable to toilet paper. Yeah, I don't want to pay more because you need it. Well, not anybody wanted to pay more for toilet paper because of the pandemic, and we all don't know why they did that, but we had to. Things change, times change, needs change. The reality is our needs have changed. We do not need this development. There is nothing that came out of this conversation that was a positive for Brentwood. If you just go back at the notes, if you just see, you know, the few comments that were made, even the school, even the school is land, not the actual school from what it sounds like. The city would still have to come up with those funds. The schools that are for our middle school and high school are so impacted right now. And I don't know if anybody has gone to Heritage last year, the year before, the year before. Children are sitting in the back of the class on shelves. They're sitting on the shelves because there aren't enough desks. So even if we got an elementary school built, what about all the other kids, the middle school, the high schoolers? And, and the focus was a lot on the housing. Somehow, these apartments have been just kind of brushed under the carpet. That's a huge impact, too, not just the housing, the small parks, the lack of the, um, assistance with the fire, but the apartments. So I would like to say that Brentwood denies their request and really thinks of the people that live here and stop overdeveloping. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. If you could lower your hand, appreciate that. Uh, Susan Harper, Ms. Harper, are you there?
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, I, I agree with the, uh, person that just spoke. Um, I wanted to provide a, sort of a little more boots-on-the-ground of the current situation, um, with regard to school traffic and impact on the schools. Um, I live in Shadow Lakes, and, um, I've been here from, for 16 years, and at the time when I moved in, Heritage High School and Adams Middle School were just about to open. Um, for a time, I served as the president of the parents' club, and one of the biggest concerns of the parents was the amount of traffic to get into either of these schools, as well as added traffic that backed well into Shadow Lakes on Presidio with overflow into the shopping center. And it's, it's, that, that was back, you know, 16 years ago or 15 years ago, um, and it has only gotten worse. Um, and then, due to the lack of planning when they built the schools, uh, for traffic flow, it only left one way in and one way out. A dangerous situation, um, was created this way, uh, for any emergency that may arise. So, um, and that, and that's one that has not yet been resolved. Uh, not to mention the traffic jam along Balfour leading to and from American, since Deer Ridge School traffic is going in the same directions. And, you know, it's, it's just a mess, and the impact is going to get worse. Um, and I would challenge the waiting times mentioned in the EIR because I've sat in the delays even when I was not going to the school, just trying to get out from, uh, of Shadow Lakes onto Balfour to go to work or whatever. Um, and, uh, you know, and I'm sure everybody's aware that, uh, the Presidio Drive stretches the other way towards Brentwood Hills and subsequently to San Jose Avenue, where Bridle Gate will be adding tons of students to, um, along with the surrounding areas to cause even more traffic coming through to the school via Presidio Drive. This route cannot handle this amount of traffic. Um, you know, anyone who lives in this area knows that it's, it is just already way too high traffic. As far as this, uh, attendance of the schools, Heritage was built for 2,000 students. It's now over 2,500. They've had to add portable classrooms, and now with tax dollars are building a permanent structure to accommodate the extra students. So Bridle Gate is only going to add even more students to an already over-impacted school, which we, the taxpayers, have to support, of course. And, uh, you know, adding school buildings, whether it's elementary or any other, it still needs funding for teachers and all the other resources that go along that. So we don't need more houses. That's a sure thing. And the more you add, the more it's going to cost. That's a reality. So I also would recommend denial of this project.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. If you could lower your hand, please. Benjamin Kellogg?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Kellogg. Just one minute. Um, up next will be Steve Young, Kenan Stevens, and Joan Douglas Fry. Mr. Kellogg, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, commissioners. Um, I, like others, urge you to deny this project. Projects that ask for a rezone and not in the general plan are not in the best interest of Brentwood and their residents. We always hear that we should stay within the general plan. Well, it's time for the planning commission to stand for the residents and not approve large developments that are outside the general plan or a rezone. Everything in Brentwood is impacted now, whether it's schools, fire protection, or traffic. We need commercial developments, not more residential. This is another example of a developer trying to overdevelop what the original plan started out to be. Commercial, by the way, pays more in tax revenue than does residential development. We should not be turning commercial land into residential at this point in time. Our fire protection is busting at the seams. We have three stations and nine people on duty every single day. A developer who protests and refuses to pay fire impact fees can pack their bags and leave town. They are not wanted. It's not a CNO-hater issue. It could be any developer that refuses to pay impact fees. It just so happens that CNO Discovery Homes are the only developer who refuses to pay the updated impact fees. East Contra Costa Fire Protection District does not have a ladder truck to reach a third-story building that CNO plans to build. CNO doesn't want to pay for a ladder truck, he says, because Brentwood City Hall is above a third-story grade. What does that have to do with anything at this point in time? He wants to build new construction above what our fire department can get to. He should have to pay for that equipment to service them. We should not endanger the lives of Brentwood residents or our firefighters by building of what, above what our firefighters can get to. This is a message to all developers, as well as the elected officials in Brentwood. Brentwood is done being taken advantage of by developers and is no longer for sale. Residents now want smart development, not any development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. If you could lower your hand, please. Steve Young? Mr. Young, are you there? We can hear you now.
All right. Good enough. All right. Well, I was going to take a little bit of a different approach here. Um, CNO, um, I have no hatred for any of your employees or anything to do with the company. It's, it's more, uh, it's more of a, um, ethical situation, and we've had so many great speakers, um, so, uh, no hatred, just intelligent speakers here. Uh, my, uh, my truth is, is that, uh, um, uh, Mr. Albert CNO, uh, mentioned, um, millions of dollars were going to be paid to the city, but the truth is that building new houses does not generate enough revenue to pay for its own long-term maintenance. So there's different cycles that go on here. It's a second cycle, a third, and a fourth. You know, the longer that, uh, people live here, they start to, uh, they start to have impacts on the, uh, roads and, you know, vehicle trips, increased traffic, water pipe sewer mains, uh, and then the already mentioned burdens of, uh, on the overcrowded schools, emergency and fire service, and of course, the police. So, um, I was going to take a slightly different approach here that does not directly relate to CNO, but it definitely relates to the planning commission's consideration, and then ultimately the city council. I have, uh, attempted to, I think this question I answered a number of times without success, so I'm just going to tell you that, uh, we have a general plan that specifies emergency response times are required to average three to five minutes. The average emergency response times are documented to be 10 to 12 minutes. Some people say 13. So it certainly appears that the city of Brentwood would have legal justification, in addition to the, uh, oil wells that John Wilson spoke of, uh, you know, between that and the very inadequate emergency response times, I believe that we have legal ground to stop approving and building houses, period. I, I, I think with the right attitude, uh, from the city attorney's office specifically, um, we could challenge developers in general, not, not specific to CNO. We've got response times that are almost three times longer than what's defined in our own general plan. And the reason I don't know for sure how the city feels about what I view as a valid legal argument is because when I brought this up at city council meetings before, the city attorney's office replied, and it's recorded on video, that they were not even aware of what it says in the general plan about the city's own requirement of three to five-minute average emergency response times. So in June of 2020, the 125,000, oh, I'm out of time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Young. Uh, Kenan Stevens, Mr. Stevens, and then following Mr. Stevens is Joan Douglas Frye, Mr. Nigel Jessick, and Marisol Vaez.
Am I unmuted now?
You are, Mr. Stevens.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, yeah, so I just have to quickly, um, add for my brother because he was trying to get onto the call, but he had to go take care of the kids. Um, that he and his, uh, family, his wife and his family are, are against this. They live, uh, off of San Jose, and people are already taking that as a shortcut, cutting through their, their neighborhood. It's pretty dangerous. Uh, they don't want to see more traffic in there. And they also deal with the methane wells, and they were not happy to find out about the, you know, the, the venting through the walls and so forth. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, try to touch on a couple of topics and hopefully not repeat things too much. Um, but if there's a zoning review coming up for the city, I think we need to wait until that's done before doing anything like this. Uh, I know the, uh, the applicant, you know, asked for a fair shake, and that's a reasonable, um, a reasonable, uh, a reasonable ask. Um, but if we're going to look at the, uh, you know, the density numbers, well, uh, that's the way they were calculated in 2006, 14 years ago, and if that's what they say now, then I, I think we need to go with that. It's only fair to use the same method at time and number. So their, their numbers for the, for the mid-range density are inaccurate, and so we need to use the ones in the report. Um, I think it's a big problem that we have, uh, fees that are going to be contested. There's no point to, you know, to wait and wait for arguments to come up about why they shouldn't have to pay this or that, either if they're going to pay them or not. So I don't see any reason to move forward with this until that's, uh, agreed upon and there's a final agreement on it. So it's not something that gets discussed in the future and possibly canceled. Uh, the other thing is, uh, if the school doesn't happen, then what are we supposed to do for all the new residents? You know, then that's going to be a huge impact on, on the existing schools that are already having problems. And, um, the other thing is, as the applicant mentioned, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and, and so we don't know what the future's going to look like. Uh, maybe the commercial space will be much more valuable next year. Maybe it will be much more valuable in two years, but we shouldn't make decisions right now on something like this and rezone something not knowing, you know, not having a good idea what is coming up in the future. And if the oil well project that's going to be very close to this property happens, that's going to really taint that open space and everything else that's there. So, uh, that's another reason to wait and, and not approve this now. We should wait until we've done other things and, and ironed out some of the problems with this. Um, yeah, we don't need 15 years of, of building right now in the middle of the pandemic, uh, causing more air quality problems. And I think I'm out of time, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Uh, Joan Douglas Frye?
Yes, hi. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Joan Douglas Frye. I have lived in Brentwood for almost 20 years, was on the planning commission, served on the board of, served on the board of Marsh Creek, Friends of Marsh Creek Watershed, and am a professional environmental planner. I was there at the 2005, 2006 planning commission and city council meetings. I spoke, or I opposed the project then. It's just our original project. Let me refresh their memory. Um, the, the main issues were open space that, that I remember. That was one of my main issues, was the open space and the ridge lines and the hill features that were being, uh, that were being devastated. Um, the staff actually came back with an alternate layout that protected the hill features, and the developer refused to even entertain that, and so they took it to planning commission. Planning commission, uh, denied it. Uh, they appealed it to the city council, and city council basically said, "Go back and work with planning." And they actually accepted the planning, the, the planning staff, uh, alternate layout. So that's a little bit of a history. And now here I am, 15 years later, still talking about ridge lines and hill features. And there's, there's no analysis on EIR. The problem with the EIR is there's no analysis in the EIR about how much grading will be done. Um, the earlier one had 30 feet was going to be taken off the hill feature. There's nothing that says how much grading, how much hill feature, how much elevation will be lost. Um, also, the EIR is lacking in the, um, visual resources analysis, which could have helped us visualize what the project would look like and how much, um, uh, the, the views will change. The EIR cites four public view locations, but no visual simulations were ever done on this. The EIR says the bypass is an eligible scenic highway, but only one visual simulation was added because I made a comment on the final EIR, and it provided me with one. Um, there's no, we have no idea what, what the project is going to look like. Uh, we, uh, there should be a more robust, um, visual sims on this. The developer is known for not wanting to play by the rules. For arrogance, they are destroying our ridge lines and submitting flawed project designs, and that the project that's to be as well about the mid-range, no affordable units being built, um, loss of open space, and there is no one-story elevations being offered. Staff has to condition it. The developer's not new to Brentwood, and they have done several other residential projects, so they all, they're very familiar with what we require. There's also no, um, information about how the, um, creek will be, will be designed. There should be some, uh, just some design work with the creeks, to widen the creek to prevent flooding. Um, the project is just trying to, like, trying to ram a square peg into a round hole. Brentwood deserves a better project. The people who live here and have businesses there will have to live with this development long after the developer is gone. I therefore request that the planning commission recommend the other certification of the DE, of the draft EIR, the style of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas Frye. Uh, Mr. Nigel Jessen?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, Mr. Jessen.
Okay, well, um, I just want to say I'm a longtime, uh, uh, I've lived in, uh, Brentwood for over 20 years. Uh, I was one of the first to, to live on Shadow Lakes. Um, and I've seen the development that's, uh, happened here. Um, so I think I'm quite qualified to speak about this. Um, what I would say that Mr. CNO is wrong about, uh, how all the other developers have got their own way. Uh, that is not exactly true. Uh, he implied that, uh, got their own way, and he should get his own way. I, I don't believe that that is a fair comment, and I think he should retract it. Um, as far as Amazon, I'm afraid Amazon does not do everything yet. Um, and I think that we do need to keep our commercial space, uh, book the commercial business. I do, I do run, um, I can tell you that there are a lot of other businesses that could take, could come into the area and, uh, give jobs here. Super commuter. And I don't know if anybody living here has been a super commuter. I don't even know if you, I don't know if you know what a super commuter is, but I can tell you, when you sit two hours in a car in a direction to get to the office, when you want to come home, you have to sit in the car for another three hours. That's the definition of a super commuter. Not, it's not fun. So I really don't think, uh, making this a more, a bigger bedroom community is going to help anybody. Um, I can tell you that now I don't have to be. I do contribute to the community a lot more, encourage our citizens in Brentwood to, to, uh, pay more in the community. Um, so I encourage the committee to deny. Um, and, uh, I just want to finish. Okay? deny. And I just want to finish, okay? Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. It sounds like a lot of people have already pretty much said what I wanted to talk about, but I just wanted to reiterate that I would like for you to please deny this project to the city council. And my biggest concerns are traffic and rezonings, especially with the commercial space going into residential. There's, you know, I live in Deer Ridge, and trying to cross Balfour in the morning, if I have to get to Deer Valley Road, can take me at least a good 15 minutes. It's, you know, when school was in session, of course. But I just, the traffic and the rezoning, it will just really destroy our city and destroy everything that we've worked to try to make in this town. And if we have future meetings coming up where you want the residents to talk about, you know, the general plan or anything or restructuring, let's just wait for that. Let's get the.
Marisol, I think you got muted, but it looks like you are unmuted. Are you still there?
I am. I don't know if, if you heard any of that.
Marisol, just one second. I believe we need to mute Mr. Stevens so we can hear Marisol clearly. Go ahead, Marisol. Your time was paused.
Well, I, yeah, well, I, I don't know where it was muted or not, but I just would really appreciate for you to please deny this. Let the city get together and talk about the general plan as stated in the future. Please deny this project. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaez. The next three speakers are Vanessa Cleric, Dave Sparling, and Chris. If we can unmute Vanessa Cleric.
Hi there. Good evening. Yes, I'm also a Shadow Lakes resident. And first off, I absolutely oppose the rezoning of Bridle Gate and support all the comments and share all the same concerns of my neighborhood that have been presented. The deviations from our general plan are just too great. The community benefits are not outweighed by the detrimental impacts. We cannot keep letting developers come into our community and dictate the terms. We need to work within the general plan that we have purposely and carefully crafted with community input to ultimately achieve the fully developed city of Brentwood that many envisioned. Higher paying employment opportunities are desperately needed here for all the reasons previously mentioned. We cannot trade off any more commercial land to create more homes. I won't talk in detail of the issues that have already been brought up regarding the problems that rezoning creates, such as the added burden on fire emergency, traffic flow, noise, and inadequate open and park space, and most importantly, the close proximity to oil and gas wells. I would rather like to ask questions of the mitigation solution, should this be approved, addressing the air quality. The environmental impact report states that there are still significant and unavoidable air impacts associated with nitrogen oxide emissions, even after mitigation. They offer solutions that seem far reaching and in some cases impractical and difficult to enforce, such as asking a builder to use state-of-the-art fleets of low emissions construction vehicles, using water and space heaters with no nitrous oxide emissions, using locally sourced building materials, using all electric appliances and no gas fireplaces, requiring outdoor plugs for landscapers and to use no gas powered landscaping equipment. And presently, in my neighborhood, the vast majority of landscapers are still using gas powered equipment. So that might be a testing to get them to convert to. Installing bicycle parking and electric vehicle charging stations. I'm just wondering, how likely is that the apartment tenants and residents are going to have expensive electric vehicles and choose to bike to work? As previously mentioned, it takes most of us a minimum of 40 minutes on a good day to get to work in a car. And purchasing carbon offsets is also something noted there, which just shifts the pollution to us in exchange for sparing it elsewhere. That doesn't help us. And most importantly, who is going to monitor and enforce these mitigations, even if this does happen? You know, they just seem, seems very unlikely that these are things that can really be enforced to, to meet those standards that we're hoping for for the increased air pollution. So for these and all the reasons shared by the community, please deny approval of the rezone and do it as right through Brentwood. And I'll just also note that their, the Sino's outlook on our commercial properties are dismal, but you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. And when this is all over, you may see a rebound of people wanting to desperately get out and interact with other people like never before. And I believe that is true and that we can still have that vision for Brentwood. Thank you.
Thank you, Cleric. If you could lower your hand, and Mr. Jessen, if you wouldn't mind lowering your hand too, please. We have Mr. David Sparling.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. So Commissioner Roberts, I wanted to let you know the answer to your question, at least from 2010, for how many home permits have been approved, is close to 3,900 homes, 37, still over 3,700 single-family homes, and then about 70 each of other types of units. So the building continues to go on in Brentwood without mitigating the impact to fire that you expressed a lot of concern with, and as you've heard, a lot of people have expressed concern about tonight. But one, one of my main objections to this project is that the city just spent, and Kathy Griffin spoke about it earlier, about $315,000 on the zoning project. And really, all rezoning should be paused until we understand the impact of that, of that project. Otherwise, why did we spend that money? The other main reason is that this creates a slippery slope on the general plan. There will be developers who, or anyone who wants to build, the general plan will have no, will have no bearing at all if you continue to rezone the general plan. Jill Bryan spoke very passionately about protecting the general plan when the Ravi issue reached the city council last month. And, and that will continue to happen. The owners of PA1 will, could very easily say, well, just like Mr. Sino said earlier tonight, they got theirs, why can't I get mine? So you're open, you're opening a huge can of worms if you approve this as currently proposed. The other thing that I will say is, instead of talking about commercial space that, you know, retail space, that space could be used to generate jobs for Brentwood, which is what all the residents of Brentwood want. And you're really the first line of protection to making that happen. Not only in PA1, but in this commercial space that could be rezoned. And I'll point to a city of a slightly smaller size than Brentwood of what San Carlos has done over the last 15 years. I work in the biotech industry, and I've watched San Carlos transform over the last 15 to 20 years, to where now they will have, at the end of this year, when a building project opens, they will have well over a million square feet of research space. And most of that, I work with a developer themselves for new lab startups, for new biotech incubators, who's opened three buildings that total about 100,000 square feet. And he's going to be building another building that's another 100,000 square feet. All that can fit on the 14 acres that is about to be rezoned. So while the commercial space at PA1 is very large, losing another 14 acres just further limits our ability to bring jobs to Brentwood. When I'm in the field, I drive, you know, two hours one way and sometimes three hours one way to get either there or back home. And it's time to start focusing on bringing jobs to Brentwood. This plan does not allow that to happen at all. And I would say that, you know, you already heard them, the applicant basically threatened to sue about paying the fire fees. Sino is known for suing when they don't get something they want, and when they get something they want, there will be more lawsuits coming after this if they don't get everything they want for this project. And I'll, I'll just close with this regarding the oil wells. There's a lot of science in, in the, in the EIR that, that talks about the science around it. Ask yourself this question before you vote. If you wouldn't buy a home built on an oil well, why would you allow homes to be built on oil wells? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sparling. Chris?
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't need more houses and especially car washes. That's an easy add-on. I've seen that over here on Sand Creek, that they added that. I understand we're trying to get more communities developed, but we just don't need that. It's not planning for the future. We need jobs when we are ready. This global pandemic has put everything on a pause. I think we need to reflect and not act to the highest bidder and go out and try to secure additional funding. I'm relatively new to all this, but what I'm seeing is that people want to come to Brentwood and, and develop our land when we have a nice community here. And I hate to see that taken away by, by the dollar. Let's enjoy what we have. What will be the benefit of having an extra 1,000 to 1,500 more people to our community for the scarce lack of jobs? Look at the streets of Brentwood. We need jobs, not homes. The streets of Brentwood is struggling to keep businesses, so they're not even able to hire our people. What are those 1,000 to 1,500 people are going to do for employment in our community? They're going to be clogging Highway 4 and Bascal Road and just causing more of a gridlock when we don't need that here. The fire department is already stretched extremely thin. 14 minutes for a response time is totally unacceptable. And the vagueness of what this applicant is doing to address that concern is not something that I'm pleased with. It's just very vague on how they're going to approach that. We don't need to overdevelop our community. I like what one of the other ladies said. And why are we in a rush to build anything in our community right now when we don't know what is the future? I like the idea of doing commercial development because it does give us the opportunity to build jobs here in our community, and that's what we need for our young people so we can actually have people stay home instead of traveling two, three hours to work. It'll improve our lives, it'll improve our, our ability to be home with our families, and reduce the stress on everybody. And thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we have Mike Kleeman. However, did receive a request to speak from Susanna Meyer, although Suzanne, I don't see her hand raised now. So after Mike, if you would like the opportunity to speak, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Good, thanks. I just want to say, I'm, I'm hoping we don't go through with this rezone. I'm simply losing faith in our Brentwood leadership now, and I hope we make a good choice here. I'm fine with the general plan. I live in Brentwood Hills, right next to where Bridle Gate is. I'm fine with the 160 homes. I'm good there. I'm just not down with adding another 160 homes or more, just because Sino knows how the Jedi Mind tricked us over and over again. Stripping the commercial acreage, shrinking it by half, that's, that's the end of the discussion. That's a roadblock. That's a deal breaker. That space needs to be preserved for convert, commercial development whenever we can get around to it. I want to see the city refocus in that regard. I don't understand why we keep kneeling down before these developers over and over again, like they're doing us favors. They literally tell us that. I don't know who negotiates these cockamamie plans on Brentwood's behalf. More importantly, I want to know who's going to put a stop to it. I hope you put a stop to it. You're setting a dangerous precedent if you approve this application. Put a stop to letting the developers run roughshod over us. And tonight, that kind of crass attitude from Sino, asking current residents to bestow sympathy upon you and that we should pay for what you allege are sins, sins of our city's past, those remarks are exactly why you have Sino haters. So I hope the commission, I'm asking you, re-gift this application, send it back to Sino. I'll be happy to stamp the sympathy card to it. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris, or Mike. Do we have Susanna Meyer on the line show?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, Ms. Meyer. Hi.
Hi, thank you. My name is Susanna Meyer. I'm a Shadow Lakes resident calling in to express my concerns over the Bridle Gate development and approved, proposed alteration to its circulation map and resulting emergency response impact. In addition to this plan adding congestion to routes already busy from the use of Brentwood Hills and Shadow Lakes communities as pass-throughs, I believe it will also negatively impact critical access in events of emergency. The elimination of San Jose West side as an alternative exit route should, it would create insufficient access and a choke point if emergency vehicles need immediate and clear entrance and exit. And it could cause hazards to residents if evacuations become necessary during crisis. The potential for obstruction to emergency support can only be exacerbated by our fire district's lack of a ladder truck to serve 11 three-story apartment buildings. The East Bay Times actually published an article about a very similar concern in a November 2019 issue, and referred to an emergency evacuation for the summer life development off of East Cypress and San Mounds Boulevard in Oakley. The lack of sufficient access in and out caused confusion and delays and interfered with emergency response passages as residents moved to exit an area quickly being engulfed by wildfire. I would like to stress that the general plan circulation diagram calls for Sand Creek and San Jose East and West to provide access to this future route. I want to suggest that the original circulation proposed in the general plan be reinstated, and that the project they reviewed for this and concerns around infrastructure, emergency response, residential traffic and congestion, building on oil wells, commercial to residential rezoning, environmental impact, our city's job-housing imbalance, reduced open space and park land, et cetera, everything noted by the other commenters. This project, as it has been re-envisioned, is not right for our city, and I do believe that we should be sticking to the original general plan instead. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Pippin. Excellent job cueing everyone. If you would still like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. We will run back through the list, make sure that we have everyone covered. Okay, I'm not seeing any either. Commissioner Pippin's not seeing either. So I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All right. Commissioner Ziegler.
May.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Cross.
Aye.
Commissioner Pippin.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
That is an aye for me as well. Discussion. I'm just going to randomly pick you, unless you would like to start, but we'll start with Commissioner Ziegler.
All right. I'm sure we'll be going around several times here. One of the things that I wanted to point out that I don't know if the commissioner saw, we did receive an email at about 5:30 this evening, that was over 750 signatures of petitions of residents of the, of the city that are opposed to this project, that have various comments. Obviously, first and foremost, I just want to start by, by thanking city staff, you know, all the public comment leading up to this, from, from a couple weeks ago to tonight, you know, the, the applicant themselves, I know, has been a long journey for everybody in this. But I'm going to kind of go down through a few of my talking points, and then I'll let others speak, and then we can maybe circle back. People know I'm a small business owner, and I have constantly and always stated that the future of Brentwood is commercial. Yes, residential is a key part. We get fees from them that can provide monies today, but are not everlasting within the city. And in this situation, I sat on the PA1 Subcommittee for almost a year and a half, and we outlined the general, outlined that plan and how we wanted to have that zone. And this project comes out and is asking to change the general plan. You know, as a few of the residents and folks commented earlier, I believe city council just passed or just allocated some monies to, to relook at this. And I think it would be shameful, and I'm just going to point out, say it, for us to come in and approve a general plan amendment prior to that study being done. Not only do I oppose taking any commercial away from the city, as many have stated, you cannot get that land back once it's gone. And that's a real struggle for me. When I look at the overall project, there's a lot of things and a lot of concerns that I have. I brought one up earlier about the, the density and the way that's being calculated. When you look back at the original plan, you had the rolling hills and, and some folks talked about the stimulus as you're driving down. That's going to be lost. We go to smaller lots, higher density, we lose almost one-fifth, almost 20% of the park space. And I agree. I have two, well, they were young. I'd lived in Brentwood for 20 years, and the park situation is terrible. We couldn't find soccer fields years ago for the kids to compete and play on and to practice on. And now we've got two little small pocket parks again. And I know parks were bought up by several already, that, you know, why not make one, you know, a couple, but a larger, you know, four acre, I believe is what someone mentioned there. So the high density in- So the high-density in terms of the apartments, again, we're changing the zoning. I don't agree with high-density apartments. We've got that allocated up in PA One and other areas north of there that satisfy that need. I just feel that if we go in there and change the general plan, we're going to, as others stated, and I'll use their words, you know, we go down a slippery slope because we can't get that back. Traffic is an absolute concern. I know Commissioner Roberts, as well as I'm sure all of us, are very concerned with fire and public safety. Right now, we have to have that as one of our utmost priorities. As a planning commission, we're looking at these types of projects and the amount of traffic actually the amount of people that it's going to bring to our communities. If our response times are supposed to be three to four, five, six minutes, and they're now thirteen, again, what's it going to take? Unfortunate is loss of lives that we're playing with by looking at adding in the higher density. So I wrote down every single speaker that spoke, and their different comments. And everything, unfortunately, I could say maybe one said they were innocent, not necessarily for the project, but for the project, they came back and made a lot of changes. I just have a hard time. I look at the developer agreement that gives away, I dealt with that with another builder in town, and I'll be, I was one of the few, and I was opposed to that then. I feel that that gives a lot away, and I don't agree with it. You know, the impact fees, I know the developer, you know, feels that that's flawed. As others have spoken, unfortunately, times have changed, and we have to look at what's going forward, not, we can't be continuously looking back. If we were looking back, then we'd be looking at a project of one hundred and fifty-six homes and not two hundred and fifty-two plus another two hundred and fifty-eight. I look at the design review, if we even get that far, and I look at, you know, they came in with four elevations, over twenty-five units. They wanted all the corner lots, two-story, where we require, you know, fifty percent being single-family home. I just see so many concerns of mine when I look at the overall project. But first and foremost, before we get to anything, we all have to talk to the group and say, are we okay with making the change to the general plan? If we do that, then we can start talking about all the other things. But first and foremost, I think we have to talk about the general plan and what our field is at. So those are my initial comments.
Can you hear me? Okay. I would also very much like to thank the city and the community for all their work and their research and dedication here. I agree with Commissioner Ziegler and the voice of our community about the significance of commercial development and the concern about deviating from the general plan. There were forty public comments, over forty, that have been received via email and otherwise. And as Commissioner Ziegler said, a petition with over seven hundred and fifty signatures on it. And the public has spoken, and it is clear that they are against this project. And while the project is substantially revised from its prior version that expired in 2013, and it increases the number of homes threefold, I have significant concerns about fire resources, circulation, visual aesthetics. However, my greatest concern is also the general plan amendment and changing that land use designation from regional commercial to planned development. I think it impacts the future of everything having to do with the precedence being set and adjusted. I don't agree with the, well, I will speak to a couple of things here. If you look at the general plan, there are three criteria, findings that will be made for any general plan amendment. One is that the amendment is deemed to be in the public's best interest. Number two is the amendment is consistent with and are compatible with the rest of the general plan. Three is the potential impacts of the amendment have been assessed and have been determined not to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. And four, the amendment has been processed in accordance with applicable provisions of the California Government Code and California Environmental Quality Act. And in doing a significant amount of research, it does not, I don't feel that this amendment meets those criteria, and that's what was laid out in the general plan from the get-go. I don't agree with changing the land use designation. The general plan is our land use constitution and has been carefully and thoughtfully crafted with a vision for Brentwood's future. Deviation to this extent is not in alignment with the goals of the quality of life that our residents deserve, including and maybe more importantly, affecting similar decisions for commercial land use in the future. Those are my thoughts without diving deep into each and every element. So thank you, Chairperson Pippin.
Can you hear it?
Thank you. I want to thank the public for chiming in and participating. You can't expect change without participating, so they did, and they've spoken. And as a representative, not only as a resident, but a representative to the city of Brentwood, I've heard them loud and clear. As a resident of Brentwood, I hope all have heard me loud and clear. There are just too many impact issues with this project. We have noise, we have environmental, which unfortunately engages the oil well issue, traffic, school, fire. And I just want to reflect on a statement that was made by the developer as it relates to downtown in the city hall. People don't live in city hall. So that being said, we don't live in city hall. Folks go to work in city hall, and things could happen in city hall, but they don't live in city hall. Folks that we're talking about would be living in an apartment structure. And to that end, they are entitled to safety. Fire trucks with ladders. And so to that end, the response time was very, it really rocked me. Police parks. And the idea that we've already spent this three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, it just seems like, why did we do that? I know we did it because there's a purpose behind it. And so to move forward and believe that we don't have to consider that in this decision would be reckless on our part. That being said, I think that my colleagues have said it all. And I'm going to stand very strongly on emergency management piece. That is very disconcerting, having had a fire in Brentwood just a couple of weeks ago. No one seems to know how all that turned out and the time it took to contain that fire. Putting a co-op city inside of the city of Brentwood, it just doesn't seem like it's a responsible thing for us to do. Additionally, I moved to Brentwood to get away from the big city life. That being said, coming into an environment that's quite bedroom, very bedroom. It's not Walnut Creek, it's not Concord, it's a very bedroom community. I don't find that we're trying to catch up with one of those municipalities and leaving it as a bedroom community would just serve the Brentwood residents, including myself, just fine. So that being said, thank you very much, Chairperson. And I thank you to the residents of Brentwood. My people, the City Council, the folks, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts.
All right, thank you. I mean, I think I want to start out by thanking everybody who's really shown up for this. The staff report is incredibly thorough. I appreciate the developers coming and sharing a little bit more insight into their processes. I'm very grateful for the voices of the community that has shown up through emails and coming and speaking tonight. I think we have a very comprehensive picture of what this development could look like and the implications it will have for Brentwood as a community. And as the developer mentioned, there are some things that could turn out very beneficial to the city of Brentwood. For example, completing out some of the trail. I mean, our trail system out here is amazing, and of course, something like that could be good. But if we really start to look at the big picture, as this commission were asked, are these amendments deemed to be in the public interest? And overwhelmingly, I don't believe them to be so. You know, on a very minute level, even just looking at that one very expansive park, breaking it into pocket parks, it seems really little in the scale of things, especially since we're looking at larger issues. But for big quality of life, we have a ton of tiny parks. We need space. We need expansive spaces. The San Jose extension, will it facilitate traffic? Partially, but is it really going to solve some of these bigger traffic issues that such a large development is going to bring to the city of Brentwood? Absolutely not. It seems like a little bit of a Band-Aid solution to a bigger problem. The one part of this plan that I personally was really attracted to initially was that it would enable development of multifamily residential houses in Brentwood. And we need more types of development that answer to something that is not just a big, single-family home. However, what Brentwood truly needs is affordable housing. And as soon as we see that the developer is going to be paying lieu fees instead of creating spaces that are affordable housing, all of a sudden, those multifamily houses don't seem so important and relevant to the Brentwood community as it is today and in terms of growth. I don't think that this represents the Brentwood we live in. I don't think it represents Brentwood moving forward. As many of you guys have all mentioned, we need jobs here. And giving up, even though it's less than fifty percent of the space, to create houses that aren't even affordable housing that we need and sacrificing that commercial space, that's problematic. Many people, I mean, I think we had a speaker tonight, or I know we had a speaker tonight that spoke about the super commute. Anybody who's done that doesn't want to do it anymore. My sister commutes over five hours round trip every day. We need good jobs here, and eliminating commercial development is taking away our opportunity of truly enjoying the high quality of life in Brentwood and enjoying the parks and the amenities. If we're in town, we can enjoy them. Otherwise, we really are going to be stuck as a bedroom community without much of a future. And I think that really summarizes my perspective on this proposal.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cross. As for myself, simply put, I'm opposed to the project as it is been proposed by the developer. Not only what I've heard expressed by the community tonight, that we're spoken by the commission, the overwhelming amount of opposition that we've received. There's just too many issues as far as we're changing commercial zoning. We need that commercial property, and if we take that away, as Commissioner Ziegler said, it's not coming back. Times are going to change. I know we're in the middle of a pandemic. And buildings, does it make sense? Unfortunately, maybe a year down the road, it will increase again. I hear the developer's concerns, and I understand. Although, there's just so many harmful impacts to the community. You're looking at more traffic by bringing in almost five hundred and seventy-eight more residents. If that school, if the school doesn't come, which we desperately need, but as far as the development agreements, there's in lieu fees where they're going to pay not to have affordable housing. Okay, maybe that will be sufficient with the apartments. We've already have two that have been approved developments. Do we need more apartments at this time when that's commercial land? Just development agreement with impact fees for fire. We bring in five hundred more residents to the neighborhood that has one way in and one way out. It makes absolutely no sense, absolutely no sense. I'm not opposed to developing that area, but at this time, the way it's proposed, I cannot see why we wouldn't move forward. That being said, thank you to everyone for their patience tonight, for their comments. I appreciate it, and it's been very valuable to all of us. If any of the commissioners have further comments or want to run back, I think, from everyone's comments, I think I see where we're headed, and I will entertain a motion at this time.
To the chair, this is Commissioner Ziegler. Well, first off, I guess we'll wait to see if anyone else has comments. If we have any at this point in time, based on what I've heard.
This is Commissioner Cross. I also have no more comments based on what I've heard.
Commissioner, no comments at this time.
Commissioner Roberts has no more comments at this time.
All right, through the chair. It's my understanding, and based on, I feel we're all out of here. I think the way we can proceed would be, this is what I need to make, not make this assumption here, that Planning Commission Resolution twenty dash zero two eight would be the general plan amendment. We would only need to make a recommendation that the Planning Commission, if we choose, deny that, the twenty dash zero two eight as written, and then we wouldn't have to make any other recommendations. Because if the general plan doesn't go through, then all the other resolutions are muted. I want to confirm that either with Ms. Athenius, Debbie Hill, or our city attorney.
If I can interject through the chair. If it is the Planning Commission's decision to deny the project at this time, staff has included a resolution, which is Resolution number twenty dash zero three three, would deny the project in its entirety.
I'm sorry.
We would only need to consider the one resolution, should that be the decision that you wish to make this evening.
Now that you started that, and now I just swiped my screen, and I'm trying to find it again. It was Plan, it was Planning Commission Resolution twenty dash zero three three. Zero three three.
Yeah, zero three, correct.
So we would be making a motion to approve Planning Commission Resolution twenty dash zero three three in order to deny the project.
Correct.
This is Commissioner Ziegler. I make a motion to approve Planning Commission Resolution twenty dash zero three three as written.
Second, by Commissioner Cross.
Just to reiterate, if you're a yes vote, that is in favor of denial. If you're a no vote, that is not in favor of denial. And we will go with the roll call vote. Commissioner Pippin.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Ziegler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cross.
Yes.
And that is a yes for me as well. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much for everyone's time. If you're going to be jumping off the call, I appreciate your patience with us tonight. We will move forward with informational reports. Commissioner Roberts, do you have anything from TransPlan?
I have none at this time. Next commission meeting, I will have my then met with TransPlan, and we'll have something at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Ziegler or Cross, do you have any design review?
Not at this time.
No.
All right, we have not met for land use as well, so I have nothing to report. Do we have any requests for future agenda items? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Ziegler.
Yes.
Commissioner Pippin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cross. All right, and that is not for me as well. The next regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for September fifteenth, 2020, at seven P.M. and will be held at the Brentwood City Council chambers located at one fifty City Parkway. Everyone, have a good night, and thank you so much again for your patience and all of your input. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our web-
Visit our website at www webex.com.